Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started with the instructions. All members of the City Council and Planning Commission will be participating in the regular meeting remotely via teleconference. This special meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order and 2920. Some or all members of the City Council will be participating, and the Planning Commission will be participating in the meeting remotely via teleconferencing or other electronic means consistent with the Executive Order and 2920, which suspended certain requirements of the Brown Act. Please refer to the end of the agenda for instructions related to public comment and attending the meeting. Irene, could you please continue to read on addressing the City Council and public comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So as a reminder, just like to state for the record that this special meeting is being recorded and conducted by telecommunication pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's Executive Order in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Members of Council and Commission, please remember that in order to prevent cross-talk or feedback, please mute your microphones until it is your turn to speak. And for members of the public wishing to make a public comment, please remember that this is a special meeting and only comments or statements concerning the agenda items listed below are allowed. Public comments will be taken. If you wish to make a public comment, simply raise your hand using the icon on your smart device or by dialing *9 if you're using just your telephone. Please listen carefully for the mayor or city clerk to address you, and you can unmute yourself. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Once the public comment is closed by the mayor, no additional comments will be taken unless the mayor chooses to reopen the public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. And at this moment, we'll have Council, Rocco. Council and Planning Commission.
Yes, so I'll start with Council. Councilmember Bagby. I'll come back to her. A Councilmember Paula.
We saw his lips.
Yes.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Lamb.
Present.
Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
And Mayor Cruz.
Present.
And we have the Planning Commission next. Commissioner Athee.
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Cox.
Present.
Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Singler.
Here.
Commissioner Wegi.
Present.
Vice Chair Hober.
Present.
And Chair Shanahan, who has an excused absence. Thank you.
Very well. Now, I would like to know if there's any conflict of interest declaration on any of the items for today? The none. Any changes or deletions to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, staff has no proposed changes or revisions to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Okay, so in terms of public comments, if anybody has any comments at this point, this is a special meeting and only comments or statements concerning the agenda items listed below are allowed. Public comments will be taken following the staff presentation and initial questions and comments by Council and the Planning Commission. Each public comment is restricted to three minutes in length. So, I have a technical question. Do we allow any comments at this moment?
Yes, if may Mayor, you can allow public comment at this time, and then following each presentation, you can reopen it for them.
Are there any hands for right now?
I am checking our audience, and yes, I do have one hand up from Preston.
Go ahead.
Hi Preston, you can unmute yourself and share your comments.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just unclear on the public comment section, how it's going to work. According to the agenda, it seemed like it was going to be after the presentation, but then now it's just became an "and" or an "or", so I do have comments from the district. I figured it was most appropriate to make them at the end, as was stated in the agenda, so I just need clarity on when I should make the district's comments.
David or our attorney?
Madam Mayor, I would recommend that the Council take up the comments after the presentation. I think it will help inform Council on, you know, what may be some responses or feedback in terms of the questions. But it is at your pleasure if you'd prefer to hear the comments beforehand.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question just a minute ago, because I thought that it was going to be a presentation, discussion, and then public comment. So, I didn't, you know, I had kind of the same question as Preston, you know, why are we going to have, you know, public comment at this point? So Preston, let's go ahead and wait and see our presentation, and maybe it would be more clear.
Yeah, I think that's perfect. I'll wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Preston. All right, so we'll go ahead and request for the presentation of state housing law update by our attorney firm. And today we have, today we have Alex Mog. Did you have a question?
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
On behalf of just a few people that have contacted me, there's a group that contacted, they couldn't make it tonight, and they had asked that we would table this, and so I told them I would ask that we would table this item until an in-person meeting. I know what the answer is going to be. However, on behalf of these constituents, I am asking, this would be tabled till the July 28th meeting, when we could do it in person.
Well, I believe this is recorded, and people can access it. So, what would be the appropriate legal way to do this? Do we have to vote on it, David? Or Alex?
If the Vice Mayor, if Vice Mayor Lance is making a motion, then if there's a second to table it, then there would be a vote. If there is no second, then the motion would die, for lack of a second.
So are you making a motion, Todd?
Yes, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Madam Mayor, appreciate it.
Of course. Okay, so we'll move on. Alex, are you on the hot seat?
Yes, one sec, let me just settle.
Madam Mayor, before Alex begins his presentation, I would just like first to make some opening comments if I can, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
First, I want to thank the Planning Commissioners for joining Council tonight in this important workshop to really discuss and focus in on housing. But, you know, this really ties in very much so to our City of Cloverdale general plan, as well as our zoning ordinance. And it's an opportunity, and the first opportunity in several years, for both the City Council and the Commission to have a dialogue about important land use matters affecting our community and our city. A lot of the presentation tonight is focused on information that is intended to help inform both the Commission and Council on relevant laws and regulations that will pertain, or do pertain, to your decision-making role on land use development and projects going forward. And so this is a tremendous opportunity for the Commission and Council to have an open dialogue following the presentation about the impact and effect of some of the housing laws, and what that means for our general plan and our zoning ordinance. So I hope today is viewed as an opportunity for the Council and the Commission to have positive dialogue about, you know, the future of our community as it relates to, you know, future development, our general plan and zoning ordinance. So I think a lot of the information today is, again, intended to help inform the Council, help inform our Commissioners, but also see it as an opportunity for some dialogue in between the two bodies. And I think it's really important, hopefully we can do this more often. Council has a very busy agenda, and sometimes it's difficult to have these types of workshops, and hopefully we can have more in the future. But this is, again, an opportunity for your Commissioners and the Council to seek alignment on their perspectives relative to how this legislation is, particularly housing legislation, affects our general plan. So with that said, I'd like to introduce Alex Mog. Alex is a city attorney with Myers-Navey, very well experienced in housing legislation. This isn't going to be his first presentation on housing law. He's provided a similar presentation to other cities within the city of, or within Sonoma County. And after reviewing his presentation, we thought it would be particularly valuable to share this information and perspective with our Council, with our Commission jointly, so you could have a conversation about it following the presentation. So with that said, let's go ahead and turn it over to you, Mr. Mog, and proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Planning Commissioners. As David said, we, this presentation is about recent housing laws that have been adopted in the state, and I would defer to the mayor as to whether, you know, I'm fine taking questions as they come up. If you have questions, or if the mayor wants to wait, have questions held until the end, that works as well. Whichever you prefer, it's entirely up to you.
I advise that people make notes and write their questions, and ask those at the end.
Perfect, thank you. So in recent years, the legislature has determined, you know, that there is a housing crisis in the state, and has adopted really numerous bills to try to address this issue. They range from, you know, many of them are small tweaks, but there are also some pretty major bills that have passed. You all may be familiar with, you know, changes to the accessory dwelling unit laws that have occurred in the last few years. That's one example. There are a number of other examples. And the legislature did this and sort of had a batch in 2017. They had another batch in 2019. And there are a number of bills pending currently before the legislature, which I would expect, you know, some of them will die, but I imagine there'll be a few that make it through and get signed into law this year as well. Many of these laws are about affordable housing or require that, you know, the housing projects that are subject to these laws be, have some affordable component, but not always. Sometimes it's just for any project market rate or affordable. And these laws are being used more and more by developers. Often when a law gets passed by legislature, it takes developers, you know, a couple of years to figure out the scope of the law, whether they want to take advantage of it or not. And so as time passes, we're seeing these laws getting invoked more and more. So before we get into the major laws themselves, I think it'd be helpful just to sort of review what we mean when we say affordable housing. Because there's sort of what we might call naturally affordable housing, where housing that just happens to be, you know, set by a landlord at a price that is affordable to members of the community. But when we say affordable housing, what we normally mean is sort of deed-restricted properties, properties that are required to be rented or sold at an affordable price to households that make a certain amount of income. So when we talk about affordable housing, the key measurement is the area median income. So the state calculates the income of everyone in Sonoma County and figures out what the area median income is. And they have a chart, and they adjust it by, you know, the number of people in a household, but they figure, you know, what is the area median income in Sonoma County? So if you are above moderate income, that means you're more than 120% of the area median income. That's considered above moderate income, which is also just market rate, considered market rate. Moderate income would be, you know, in a range of 80 to 120% of area median income. Low income would be less than 80% of area median income. And very low income would be less than 50% area median income. And sometimes there are other categories, but those are the main categories. And so in Sonoma County, for a family, for the median, the area median income is $133,000. And so for a rental income, if someone is going to have affordable housing that's affordable to low-income unit, rent has to be, rent for that unit would be set based on this median income. So for example, for a unit that is restricted to a very low-income household, the monthly housing cost, which would be the rent plus any utilities, may not exceed 30% of 50% of the area median income divided by 12. So just to break that equation down a little bit, for a very low-income household, they make 50% of the area median income. They cannot make any more than that to qualify as very low income. The rent for that unit, the regulations provide that you shouldn't spend more than 30% of your income on rent. So that 50% of area median income is multiplied by 30% to get the maximum amount you can spend on rent, and then you divide that by 12 to get the monthly rent amount. And that's how rent would be set in a restricted unit, that's restricted that year. And for ownership units, there are similar formulas in there to make sure that that property is sold at an affordable price. So if someone owns a house, when they sell it, there's going to be a restriction on how much they can sell it for. They can't sell it for market rate. And there are deed restrictions that lay out these requirements. And for rental housing, that would be, you know, 55 years, the agreement lasts four. And for sale, it would be 45 years. So for example, the affordable housing project the city recently, you know, partnered with to make happen, that has, you know, these rules in place in an affordable housing regulatory agreement that's recorded against the property to make sure it is enforced over time. So the other important element to be aware of is the regional housing needs assessment. And some of you may be familiar with this, especially if you, you know, have been on Council or Planning Commission for a while. This is basically how the state plans for housing units. So every jurisdiction in the state, every city or county is required to provide its fair share of the state's housing goal. So the way this works is the state, the Housing and Community Development Department, ECD, comes up with a number they think is how many units of housing the city, the state needs to produce, you know, over a 10-year timeframe or over some timeframe. They then divide that to each area in the state, each metropolitan area in the state, so it gets sent down. A share of that is assigned to ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments. And then ABAG then takes that number that they've received, and they divide it up between all the cities and counties within ABAG's jurisdiction and assign an amount to each city. And the housing element is part of the general plan, but it gets updated. It's required to get updated every eight years. And in the housing element, cities are required to identify site with realistic and demonstrated potential to meet the RENA numbers. So, you know, you have to have enough, if your RENA, just this is a completely random number, but if your RENA number is 1,000, you need to have zoned capacity to build 1,000 units in your city. RENA numbers are also split up by income, so those 1,000 units would say, you know, might say 200 of those have to be very low income. And so the city needs to have zoned capacity to build 200 very low-income units. And there are rules for determining what could be very low-income units and for the purposes of RENA, and it's generally, has to do with zoning. You know, if an area is zoned one, you know, one home per five acres, that's assumed to not be sort of a low-income unit, whereas something that might be zoned much higher, you know, 30 units an acre, could be considered someplace where low-income housing could be built. So we're actually right in the process of figuring out RENA allocations for each jurisdiction. ABAG has come up with sort of their final draft allocation for all the cities and unincorporated areas in the ABAG region in the Bay Area. And Cloverdale will have its final allocation soon. We know what its draft allocation is, but they have the final allocation very soon. So just by way of example, for the fifth cycle, which is going to end, you know, at the end of 2022, the city had the plan for 211 units, and you can see how they were split up between low, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income. The sixth cycle, the draft allocation is 278, and it's going to be split up similarly between those four income categories. 278 is definitely an increase, and a significant increase over the fifth cycle numbers. But one thing for the Council and the Planning Commission to keep in mind is the numbers that ABAG got for the sixth cycle, for this next cycle coming up, was, you know, more than twice as much as the number of units that were given last time. So many cities receive, you know, maybe three times as many units to plan for as they did last time. So that was just a lot of information, background information for the Council and Commission to have as we talk about some of these major bills, these major bills. So the first bill we're going to talk about is SB 35, and that may be something the Commission or the Council has heard about recently. There have been a number of projects proposed and planned in Sonoma County and Marin County using SB 35. And it's really an example, when I said that developers are starting to take advantage of laws, this is really the law I meant the most. You know, this is, at this point, four or five years old, but now is when developers have really started to take advantage of this law. So SB 35 allows for streamlined ministerial approval of multifamily housing projects that meet certain requirements. And this law applies in cities that have issued fewer building permits than their share of the RENA allocation. So you saw the chart earlier that I showed you where it had the breakdown of units. The city has planned for all of those units. The city did that as part of its last housing element. But unless building permits have actually been issued for each type of housing category, the city isn't considered to be meeting its RENA obligations for the purposes of SB 35. And as I'm sure the Council and Commissioners, where, you know, whether or not a project comes to fruition and pulls building permits is really outside the city's control largely, you know. City can provide some financial assistance, but it's really, you know, a developer builds something, or they want own property, or they don't, it's, that's outside the city's control. So SB 35 does apply in Cloverdale, because Cloverdale hasn't met those RENA goals. It applies in almost every city in California. There's really only about 30 cities out of, you know, the 400-plus cities where this doesn't, this law doesn't apply. So in Cloverdale, a project, in order to meet SB 35, you have to meet certain requirements. And one of them is to have a certain portion of your project be affordable. So if you have a project of larger than 10, smaller than 10 units, you don't have to have any part of it be affordable. But if it's larger than 10 units, you need to have at least 10% of the units restricted to, and be affordable to households making less than 80% AMI. Or as an alternative, you can have, which would be low income. Or as an alternative, you could have at least 20% of the units affordable to households making below 120% of the AMI, which would be, you know, moderate income, what we consider. So in cities that have not, in cities that have met the above-moderate income goal, so in cities that have built enough market-rate housing, have met that element of RENA, they, projects in those cities are required to be 50% affordable. Because the idea, I think, the legislature had is those cities have already met their market-rate housing obligations, so we don't want to make it easier, we don't need to make it easier to build market-rate housing. So there are a number of requirements projects have to qualify with to meet SB 35. First, the project has to be on a site that's zoned or has a general plan land use designation that allows residential. So someone can't propose a site, you know, if it's zoned exclusively commercial, you can't propose a site here. The project must comply with all objective zoning standards. So, you know, it has to meet, you know, the zoning, the density, the height limit, all of those sorts of things. And there's many other standards that the project has to meet with. So for example, they need to pay prevailing wage on the construction project when they're building it. They can't have displaced any tenants in order to build the project. So, but if a project meets all of those requirements, it's entitled to ministerial streamlined approval. And we'll talk about what that means in a moment. But as I said, one of the requirements is that the project comply with all objective standards. And so an objective standard is a standard that involves no personal or subjective judgment by a public official, and are uniformly verifiable. So, you know, some classic examples of that would be a height back, a height limit, a setback requirement, density. Those are things that everyone can agree whether or not something meets that standard, right? We can all go out to a building, measure it, say it's 20 feet tall, and we still all get the same height for that building. A subjective standard is a standard that involves some sort of personal or, you know, subjective determination, and it's not uniformly verifiable. So for example, many cities have requirements, a project conform with the neighborhood character. That could mean different things to different people, you know. In a whole, a neighborhood that's all single-family, one-story homes, some people might think a two-story home doesn't conform with the character of the neighborhood, while other people might think it does. So that's an example of what's subjective versus objective. So in order to qualify for SB 35, a project needs to comply with all objective standards. So if a project meets all of these requirements, it's subject to streamlined ministerial approval. So the streamlined approval means that the city has to make its decision very quickly. And the city has to, basically, within 60 days, except for certain very large project, determine if it complies with any, if it's in conflict with any objective planning standards. And then has to complete any other review process that it's doing within another 90 days. So very quick turnaround on the project. And ministerial approval means that the city doesn't have any discretion in denying a project. If the project complies with all of the conditions, the city has to approve the project. And so obviously that limits, you know, the city. And and so obviously that limits, you know, the city's authority quite quite a bit. Um and also because. C Q, the California Environmental Quality Act that requires cities to do uh environmental. Review before they, you know, take certain, make certain decisions, that law only applies to discretionary. Decisions when the city has a choice. It does not apply to ministerial approval. So C Q does not apply to projects. That are approved through S B thirty five. The next law we're gonna talk about is the Housing Accountability Act. Um and this is a law that's been on the books for a number of years, but. It's been strengthened in in recent years and also developers have started using this law quite a bit more in recent years and. In particular, sort of Y M B groups, yes, in my backyard, um groups have started using this as well because. Uh they have authority to, they have standing to sue for violations of the Housing Accountability Act. So under the Housing Accountability Act, the jurisdiction cannot disapprove of a housing project or prove it at a lower density. If it complies with all applicable objective standards in place at the time an application is deemed complete. So when a complete application is submitted, uh. The law used to say, we're talking about a change in a moment, the law used to say, a city cannot disapprove of this project if it complies with all of the city's objective standards. Um you know, the city may be able to to impose conditions on a project. But it can't outright deny it or approve it at a lesser density. Um. And uh when an application like this comes in, again, the city has very. Quick turnaround, very limited amount of time to determine whether there's any, you know, inconsistencies between. The city's standards and the application. If the city um is, the city cannot deny the project or approve it at a lower density. Um unless it has shown based on the preponderance of the evidence. In the record that the project would have a specific adverse impact on the public health or safety. And there's no feasible method to mitigate that adverse impact. So that's a very high standard to me. Um it requires a lot of factual um evidence and and most projects. Will not meet that standard, very, very few in fact do. Um. And if the city violates the Housing Accountability Act, denies a project that shouldn't be denied. Um it's possible that the city could be subject to fines of up to ten thousand dollars per unit. Um that were denied, in addition to eventually a court order requiring the city to approve the project. Um so S B three thirty was a law that was passed um in twenty nineteen and. It modifies the Housing Accountability Act slightly, and what it says is. That a jurisdiction cannot disapprove of a housing project or prove that lower def- density. If the project complies with all of the applicable objective standards in place when a preliminary application is. Submitted. So the old standard was when a complete application was submitted. The new standard is when a preliminary application is submitted, made it. And the prelimi- preliminary application. Um the statute specifies what's what must be in a preliminary application, and it's a lot of information. It's a site plan. You know, number of units, you know, densities, open space, a lot of stuff is in there, but it's less than. Slightly less than what would be in a full complete application. And and what that does is it locks in standards earlier in the development process. Um it allows. Uh developers to take, you know, submit something that's maybe eighty percent of the way done, but has enough to. Um submit a preliminary application and lock in the standards it's gonna be subject to at that point. Rather than having to finish that last twenty percent to um. Get, you know, turn in an application and lock in standards. Excuse me, sorry about that. Um. So once someone turns in a preliminary application, they can't, you know, sort of wait around forever. They have to. Turn in the required application with the complete application within a hundred and eighty days. And they have to start construction within two and a half years, or they'll lose that sort of vesting of the. Existing standards that were in place when they submitted the preliminary application. Uh but they can make changes um to their preliminary application. They can make adjustments as long as they're not. Uh dramatic and they still must comply with, you know, the standards that were in place when they submitted it, an application. So S B three thirty did a number, a number of other things. This is known as the Housing Crisis Act and it was the big. Sort of a major legislation that was practiced in twenty nineteen. S B thirty five was the major law from twenty seventeen. Uh and S B three thirty was the major law from uh twenty nineteen. So one thing it does is it prohibits. Um changes to a parcel on which residential use is allowed to a less intensive use. Um which is anything that would uh lessen the intensity of housing. So. You know, reducing density obviously lessens the amount of housing that could be in the area. Um. Increasing setback requirements decreases the size of, you know, what a project could be built, you know, uh. How many units might be able to fit someplace. And there are some exceptions to list, you know, if you can. Increase standards someplace else, you can decrease them there and you won't violate the law. Um but sort of overall, you, there's this sort of new broader prohibition sort of on on what we'd call downzoning. Um and also, excuse me, keep doing that, um it also prohibits moratoriums on housing development, so. Um with limited exceptions and we're talking about that in a lot more detail right now, but. Moratorium on housing development is when the city says we're not gonna approve any more housing. Permits for X amount of year, you know, until for a year or for two years or for for six months. Um and the only exception to this rule is when the moratorium is necessary for health and safety reasons. So, you know, two months ago, when the the city council declared a, you know, stage two drought. And um enacted cer- certain prohibitions on new connections to the water system. Um that would have the effect of essentially being a moratorium on new housing construction. But we included in the resolution declaring that stage, that moratorium. A number of findings about why it was necessary to um. Do that for health and safety reasons, you know, obviously because of the severe drought. But in a normal time, you know, if the drought was over, if this city got rid of. Its drought emergency and went back to, you know, a stage one or something like that. Um and the city wasn't able to make those findings, a moratorium on housing construction would be prohibited. Um and jurisdictions are also prohibited from enacting new subjective design standards. So. We talked about objective design standards. Uh those can be changed at any point. But new subjective standards are prohibited. The existing subjective standards are fine, but new ones are prohibited. And these restrictions apply to enough, all affected cities or counties. And an affected city is a city with an urbanized area or cluster, and that has a specific definition. Um and basically every city in the state is an affected city. There's maybe one or two that aren't, but. H C, H C D has determined that basically all cities meet this definition, and so it does apply in in Cloverdale as well. Um so some other things the law does is it prohibits growth control ordinances. And similar ordinances that limit the number of permits that can be issued um. Within a year, within a time period. This law doesn't apply. If the limits were adopted by voters prior to January one, twenty twenty five and if. Um the ordinance is in a city or county. Um located within a county for which at least fifty percent, a minimum of uh fifty five thousand. Acres are agricultural land. And so, um as you may know, uh Cloverdale does have. A growth control ordinance. Um and Sonoma County does qualify as a county with at least fifty percent. Agricultural land, but unfortunately Cloverdale's growth control ordinance was not adopted by voters. It was adopted by the city council, um and so it doesn't meet the second prong of being uh. Uh adopted by the voters prior to January twenty twenty five, uh two thousand and five. So. Under S B three thirty, Cloverdale's growth control ordinance, it doesn't meet those requirements and so it is. Sort of preempted by state law and can't be um enforced as long as S B three thirty remains on the books. Just a few other um random things is, you know, it limits the number of public hearings that can occur on projects. To to five um for projects that meet um objective standards. It restricts the demolition of existing residential units, so it doesn't want. Um the legislature, I think, thought, you know, we're making it easier to build new housing, but we don't want that to come at the expense of. Displacing tenants or displacing existing residents, so this law prohibits. Uh demolition of um residential units with very little exceptions. The law is set to expire and go out of um effect in twenty twenty five. Um. I say for now here because, you know, uh the legislature often. Creates these deadlines and then just extends them. So it says the law is gonna sunset in twenty twenty five. Um and then sometime before twenty twenty five, it will extend it even further or make it permanent. Um. So the last major bill we're gonna talk about is density bonus law and this. This law has also been on the books for quite a while, but it's been enhanced and expanded by the legislature, sort of every year they make a change to it. Um so how the density bonus law works is developers who build a certain percentage. Units, who, excuse me, developers who build a certain percentage of a project as affordable. Units are entitled to a specific density bonus. So by way of example, if a parcel is. Um if the density, let's say there's a one acre parcel and it is zoned to be twenty units an acre. And the developer is building enough units to qual- as affordable to qualify for a ten percent density bonus. That means that the developer could actually build twenty two units an acre on that site, so could build twenty two units. So it. Preems the local zoning limit that the city has set and allows affordable projects to increase that. Law. Um and the greater the percentage of affordable units, the larger the density bonus. So just to. Show you how this works in practice, um on the the leftmost side, the affordable unit percentage. You see the, how many units will be affordable. And then the bonus change is depending on how many. How, what um, what affordability level those units will be. So if you start at five percent. If someone is building five percent of of a project as moderate income density. You can see there's a lot, a slash there, they don't get any density bonus. If they're doing five percent of a project as low income. Units, they don't get any density bonus. But if they're building. Five percent of the project as very low income, they would get a twenty percent density bonus. Um so as you increase the affordable unit percentage, the density bonus goes up. So if. You can see if a project is gonna be ten percent moderate income units, you get five percent density bonus. If it's gonna be ten percent low income, that would be twenty percent. Um very low in density would be thirty two and a half percent. Um and then if you, if you look all the way down at a hundred percent for a hundred percent affordable project. That is um restricting its units to very low or low income, they can get an eighty percent density bonus. So just a. A massive increase off of the density. So if the density was set by the city at twenty. Um units an acre and it was gonna be a hundred percent affordable project, the developer would be entitled to. Thirty six units an acre on that site, so very large increase. Um. You, you can only pick one column here, so you know, someone who was doing. Couldn't add up, a developer couldn't add up all of, you know, columns to get, you know, bigger. Density bonus, they can only be within one column, but still, as you can see, these are pretty significant density bonuses. Um and developers are finding that, you know, in the past, this wasn't used that often because. Affordable housing is not as profitable. Um but sometimes, especially in cities that have inclusionary requirements. That require a certain percentage of all projects to be affordable, developers are realizing, you know, well. If we're get, gotta build these units anyway, let's take advantage of this density bonus law and increase um how many units we can build. Unfortunately, that's not all the density bonus law does. So in addition to those, um. That density bonus qualifying projects are also entitled to up to three incentives. And the. Um number of incentives, the hot, more affordable your project is, the more incentives you get. So if you're. You know, only ten percent affordable, you might only get one incentive, whereas if you are. Very, you know, fifty percent affordable, you might get three incentives. What an incentive is, is it allows a developer. To um reduce or wa- you know, get rid of any site development standard or modify zoning code. Or design requirement. Um so that might be getting rid of uh parking requirement. You know, if there's a requirement for two spaces per unit, a developer could get a. Use their incentive to reduce that amount of parking or get rid of it completely. Um. And the city, the state law says the city is required to grant incentive unless it finds that the proposed incentive. Uh wouldn't result in identifiable and actual cost reductions. Um. Or would have an unavoidable adverse impact on health and safety. Both of those are are very high standards to me. So just taking the parking, for example, you know, a. Uh wave in parking is going to result in identifiable and actual cost savings for the developer because to add the parking, you know. Perhaps you need to build it underground in order to fit it on the project, or at the very least you need to pave and and have grain drainage and. The more paved space, the more your stormwater requirements are, so there are costs associated with that, so they'd be able to meet that standard. It'd be very hard for the city to say, um there was an unavoidable adverse impact on health or safety. Um because of parking not being available on on site. Um so. Those are, that's what incentive is and um. Develop density bonus projects, there's even more. Density bonus projects are entitled to waive any development standard. That would physically prevent them from being built at the permitted density and with the granted incentive. So. What this means is, let's say, a project has a um, you know, is entitled based on density bonus to be. Just by way of example, a hundred units an acre. Um and the city has a height limit of ten. Um ten feet, you know, you're not gonna be able to fit a hundred units an acre on a one acre site. Um with a ten foot height limit. So they would be able to increase that height limit. As necessary to meet that density. Um and so. Obviously, that is, you know, these things together can have a really big impact on a project. Uh and on, you know, waving city standards. Um the density bonus also, you mentioned parking. Projects that qualify for density bonus are entitled automatically to meet sort of low, certain lower. Uh unit allocation, uh parking allocations. So even without requesting an incentive. The city can only apply these parking standards, one space for one bedroom unit, one point five spaces for a. Uh a bigger project than that. So this is obviously, you know, a really big. Um, you know, change to how projects can get approved, you know, the city spends a lot of time coming up with its standards. And this allows projects to um, you know, exempt themselves really from from those standards. Um I will say, you know, from experience, from talking with my colleagues, it is. Relatively unusual for a project to come in and sort of go as maximum as they can under the density bonus. What you usually see is a developer, um you know, they might use one incentive because perhaps the city has. Twenty foot setback requirements. Twenty foot setback requirements and they can, they only want fifteen foot setback requirements, so they use an incentive for that. And they don't use any of their other incentives, that's how you most commonly see the density bonus being used, sort of. For for minor tweaks or or you know, maybe a project's en- entitled to thirty percent density bonus, but they only request that a five percent one. Or ten percent one, um that's how it's most often used in practice, but most often is not always. And there are certainly some developers or some projects that will come in and and. Demand to use the maximum density bonus they are entitled to under the law. So that was a lot of information, I think. Um I'm happy to take any questions, I think sort of a takeaway that I'm sure you all are are feeling is. You know, the state has identified what it deems to be a problem, um I think many people would agree is a problem and and. But for various reasons, the state has mandated sort of a one size. Uh um fits all approach to this by mandating that sort of preempting local control and mandating that. Um s- housing projects get approved faster, uh basically um. And so with that, you know, I sped through a lot of information, but I'm happy to take any questions that um anyone on the council or the commission has.
We'll start with uh council member Bagby.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and um thank you, Alex, for, you know, I don't know if you have kids or. Don't have kids, but for shuffling your your schedule and making this uh this meeting and and uh filling in for Jose, giving him a night off, so. Um I'm always appreciative when uh, you know, Myers Nave, um I I realize and I'm just, I'm glad you didn't have to. You know, make the drive from wherever it is that you do live, do live. And I'm always appreciative of when you guys shuffle your schedule for, you know, a meeting like this, because there's just so much recent information that it's been happening at the state level. That's really um, you know, out of out of cities' control, and I, so I just really appreciate the the workshop. Um and the 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 workshop layout and just, you know, you're you're just giving us the information as it is. So real- really appreciate the uh the presentation, I do have a specific question on uh page twenty two of the slides. Um I was wondering just um kind of for uh, you know, our um. Our planning commission and for, you know, any members of the public, just um, you see, I'm I'm hoping that's the right. I'm hoping that's the right slide, it might not be, I was wondering, you were talking about um the council-approved growth ordinance. Which is, which is actually before my time, I think, on the council, and David can correct me. Um and versus the urban growth boundary, which is our voter-approved uh or, you know, urban growth boundary, so I just was wondering if, you know, for. Um for planning commissioners and, you know, anyone kind of new to this conversation, it's like, wait a minute, we have a growth ordinance? But I thought the voters approved that, so if you could just kind of, you know, describe the two and the differences and then kind of what our our new reality is. Based on the 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 recent changes.
So I guess to oversimplify, the urban growth boundary, sort of the limits of the city, sort of stopping sprawl. Outwards and pro- you know, saying where the city can develop into um the um. The growth control ordinance limits the amount of units that could be built in any one year, the number of building permits that could be issued in any one year. So theoretically, you know, you could build a ten thousand unit uh building, that's, you know, a thousand feet tall. That wouldn't impact your growth, your urban growth limit if it was right in the middle of town. Um whereas um a growth control ordinance would say, and I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head. Um I I I wanna say it's seventy five or something would say, um the city can only issue seventy five. Permits for new housing units per year. And there are often exceptions for affordable projects or projects that meet other requirements, but it um. It limits the number of permits that could be issued in a year, so the the that part has been preempted. But the urban growth limit is still in place.
So the urban growth boundary, which is our annexable or, you know, for land that that the city can act annex into, that stays the same. But the the council-approved number of how many building permits and new homes can be issued. That that's been completely wiped out at the state level, so we don't have any control over that, and so, but then can you exit, so just to follow up, can you explain what? The um the effect of the um the drought, the temporary moratorium and, you know, and, you know, who does it start with? Um like, you you know, it for existing projects, it doesn't apply, but you know, when it when it starts and then how how long it would extend. Um and and uh what would be the, yeah, I mean, how how long will that last?
Yeah, no, of course, um so even though this, the city's growth control ordinance was preempted. It was still allowed to issue a moratorium on new housing. Based on specific health and safety concerns, which we had because of the drought, because, you know, there's a limited water supply. Um and so what the council adopted, um you know, a month or two ago at this point. Was a twenty five percent cap uh a a twenty five percent reduction in water consumption. And a limit on uh new connections based as authorized in the code, new water connections as authorized in the code. And what the code says is when the council does a twenty five percent um mandatory water reduction. New water connections can be prohibited um with certain exceptions, so. If you, I think what the code says is if you are, um this is off the top of my head, but you know, if you. Agree not to do landscaping, um and if you either make certain improvements to existing. Um uh, you know, inefficient facilities, so you go to some. Houses around town, uh five houses and you replace all of their, you know, high-flesh toilets, inefficient toilets, leaking sinks. Then you can get a permit for one one connection, or you can pay a fee per connection. With the money of that fee going towards water conservation projects, so the idea being you've you've sort of. Paid your way, you're not gonna be a new burden on the system, I mean, not gonna be increased burden on the system. Um and you know, one thing that will come before the council, uh when the ordinance comes, is whether there should be any changes to how that's set up now, whether. Whether there needs to be different changes to, you know, what the exceptions are, uh but that's what is as it stands now. And tha- and that would last as long as the drought emergency is in effect, so at some point in the future. If the council moves back to, you know, stage, stage one, or, you know, where it's just voluntary reductions or got rid of the drought emergency completely. Um then the moratorium on housing, new housing units would end as well, it would have to end as well.
Thank you.
Very well, uh planning commissioner Cox.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moak, thank you for being here and and explaining a lot of this to us tonight. Uh this is, i- as as detailed as it was, it's still still very simplified according to the different laws. Uh I have a two-part question concerning uh the fair share housing goals. That A B A G is responsible for divvying up. Uh how is that uh determined? Is it by population or land availability? Um and if so, um i- is the available of land taking in account? Uh in this determination?
Yeah, so the way that works i- in there, the law, the determination is based on laws from the legislature that say certain factors. Need to be taken into consideration, and then A B A G comes up with, uses those factors and comes up with a methodology. Um and then A B A G votes on it, so there are, you know, A B A G is a board, I I wanna say twenty nine members. Or or something like that, has representatives from around the region, so there would be, you know, I I there's certainly a member of the Snowman County Board of Supervisors on there. There's a representative from all of the um representing the cities in Snowman County on there. Uh bigger areas get more representation, so you know, San Francisco as a city. I think it gets, you know, as a city and county itself gets, you know, three members, and then Oakland gets their own representative. Plus the other cities in Alameda County get a representative, but so the methodology, you know. The, I don't know all of the details, um but it take into account population, um it takes into account access to transit. Um and the thing that they took into account this year really strongly is sort of um. For lack of a better word, sort of jobs, housing imbalance, and in assigning units to places with high job growth, so. What you'll see if you look at the whole A B A G region is they assigned. A huge amount of units to um San Francisco and San Mateo Counties, you know, cities. Uh might get, you know, three or four times as much as they had had in the past, um I think San Francisco. Um had to plan, I think they've been told they have to plan for eighty thousand units, um so the. There are different factors that come into play, but everyone, you know, got some amount.
If I can, just to add to your comment, I think you covered the factors for the uh Rena methodology. Uh but I just wanted to share with council and the commission, there there is a a report that was released by. Uh the Metropolitan Transportation Commission through uh A B A G that that provides a very detailed overview of the of the methodology. Uh I I staff has has previously provided that to to council, it's a uh it's a useful reference source. To um garner more information about the the process by which. Uh the Rena, the Rena numbers were were calculated, um a a fair amount of complexities, there's a lot of technical analysis. Uh in addition to the the factors that um uh council uh. Mog, um our legal counsel, uh referred to, and a- again, just I just wanted to point that out, that that's a, it's a a. A useful reference source just to uh delve deeper into the methodology that was utilized to calculate those Rena numbers.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Gus, uh do you have any other questions, Bob, before I go to Gus?
No, thank you very much, uh appreciated, both uh both parts of the question were answered, thank you.
Okay, uh Gus, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and and Alex, I wanna thank you for coming and sharing this with us this evening. You know, I I have about ten questions, I'm only gonna ask two, the ones that are nearest and dares to my heart. And the first one is the uh ordinance that the city of Cloverdale has uh now pertaining to um elevations. Into the hillsides, the Westley Hills of Cloverdale, um uh we'd like to preserve them the way that they are. And we have a more term, well, we we have an ordinance where they can't build, I think it's three hundred feet above sea level. Now.
Oh, it's it's four hundred, Gus.
Is it four hundred, okay, so would we still be able to protect those hillsides with that in place? Is is one question, um and then the other thing is a lot of that land is on, is in the county. So if somebody wanted to annex into the city and and do some building, um we would still have the right. Would we still have the right to refuse the water and sewer services um to kind of prevent a development from going into our hillside? And and not that I'm against development, I just wanna protect those hills.
You're nude, Alex.
Sorry about that, so to answer your first question, that um. That would be a uh an objective standard, so the city could enforce that. Um where there is a little gray area is um whether it is, you know, if someone comes along with a density bonus. And they're allowed to waive or or waive um. Objective standards, they they, it's possible they may be able to waive those issues. Um waive that limitation, that, you know, four hundred feet above height um. Sea level limitation, you know, we'd have to look at it a little more in depth to figure out, but my initial thought is that, you know. Unless you have a density bonus, that is an objective standard, um and so you have to comply with that. Um and if you're have a density bonus, you might be able to waive it, but that may be a situation where the city. Um you know, might be a situation where we can make the necessary findings, I have seen. Uh you know, these necessary findings sometimes be made on sort of for big projects on very narrow streets and high fire. Uh severity, you know, that fall within a high fire severity zone, um and and just so the um. Committee, the commission and the council know, some of the requirements for S B thirty five to get that streamlined approval. Is the project can't be in a whole number of areas, so that includes like a high fire danger zone, a. A former toxic waste site, a, I think, in a flood plain area, so there, a lot of areas aren't um. Uh aren't um aren't subject to that law, so my initial reaction is that it. Probably be enforceable, but there's a little gray area as to a density bonus law, and we'd have to just look at individual project to know a little bit. To give a definitive answer.
Maybe we have to uh look at our ordinance to make sure that we tighten it up a little bit, um because it is a vulnerable um. Uh tinderbox for fire at some point, and my 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 next question pertains to slide seventeen. And and that's where you're talking about uh city can only deny projects or approve it with lower density. And it says uh projects would have a significant adverse impact upon the public health and safety. And with that, I'm relying, I'm I'm going back to density, you know, we're just coming off of COVID nineteen. And apparently, this is something that we're gonna be living with for a while, so the more people that you put together. Uh the more communicable disease can be spread a lot easier. Um is that a concern uh that we should have when a developer wants to do extremely high density? How do we protect those individuals from communicable diseases?
Well, I I would say in general, I would, I think that probably wouldn't meet the standard, um I think. Those types of diseases, prob- you know, if you're in separate units, the spread isn't, you know, there's not that same risk of spread. You know, someone living in congregate shelter, or some, like a homeless shelter or something, that that obviously poses a serious threat. But if you're in um uh a. Uh you know, separate units, that's much less of a threat, and and one thing to note is that the law says. It has to be an impact that can't be mitigated, you know, so a lot of things um can be mitigated. So for example, you you know, to use the parking, and often what your uh people are concerned about is, oh, this is a narrow street. And you know, if there's cars parked on the side of the street, um. You know, fire trucks won't be able to get through, and that that creates a danger, which it certainly does, but what a developer will argue. And sort of, of course, I've agreed with is, well, you can mitigate that by making no parking there, if that's your concern, you mitigate it by painting the curb red. Um and so there's those, you really have to find a uh impact that can't be mitigated. Um in order to deny a project.
Thank you, and I'm just gonna, Madam Mayor, I'm just gonna hold my questions for either later in this presentation or a further date down the road, thank you.
Thank you, and I just have one question, um. And that is, uh you mentioned in the Housing um Act. That the city can request conditions, what conditions would, could you give us some examples?
So the Housing Accountability Act says you can't deny a project um or approve it at a lesser density. So for that sort of project, if if that's the only law they're relying on, you know, and someone comes in with a project. Uh they wanna build a hundred units, you couldn't say um. No, you can only build ninety units, but you could, you could say perhaps your, all of your windows need to be um. You know, shaded so that you can't see into neighbors' yards or something like that, um or you have to. Uh you know, use this type of materials or that type of materials, at at some point. You, a condition might be so burdensome that it amounts to a um denial, so you know, if you say. We're approve this project, but you have to have three hundred foot setbacks. Which makes it so, you know, there's only one foot to build the project on the site, you know, that amounts to denial, but you can. Condition a project, just like the city might condition any project, um without violating uh this law.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor, uh Alex, can you just quickly differentiate between our uh water moratorium hookup and projects? Seeking entitlements, cause I think there's some confusion in the community. Um uh my understanding is a project could get entitled and billed, and if it was the worst case, then at that point, we could deny them a hookup.
Correct, so what the, uh that's a great question to clarify that, but the. Correct, so what the uh that's a great question to clarify that, but the. Water conservation ordinance doesn't prevent the city from issuing new um building permits. Or prevent someone from getting a new building permit or a, you know, a conditional use permit to build a uni- uh unit? But what prevents is them from getting the water connection permit, so they can build their whole project. And just sort of mothball it or have it sitting there until um the drought emergency is. Um over and then they can apply for that water connection permit. And and obviously, without a water connection permit, without a water connection, you cannot get a certificate of occupancy to have people live. In the unit, so it would um um you know. It wouldn't be lived in at that time, but you know, there are developers or projects who might decide. Hey, you know, construction will take us two to three years, we hope that by the time two to three years down the road, you know. Uh we're in a better shape in the drought and we can get this permit. The water connection permit.
Is that sufficient, Kevin? Okay, we'll go to Melanie.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor, just a a follow up to Commissioner Cox's que- question um I on the slide on page seven talks about. Cloverdale's allocation at two seventy eight, um and maybe, you know, David or Kevin will remember, I just, I know I've been in several meetings. With Windsor um council members and Healdsburg council members, and they're talking about, they're getting, they have a huge increase. And Cloverdale's is re- relatively small in comparison, I just was wondering if um. If you Alex, you know, if you're you're familiar with those other two allocations in the North County.
Them off the top of my head, I don't know Healdsburg, I do know Windsor's was, you know, uh. As they told me this this afternoon, that it was like twice as much as it was before, you know, very.
I think I heard that Windsor's is at least twice, and I think Healdsburg's is almost three times. Um and they're they're accepting them, they're not gonna, they're they're gonna, they're not challenging them, and so just in, just to put it into perspective. Um we're we're actually in pretty good shape compared to the the other cities just just south of us. And I just was wondering if if you wanted to comment or 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 Kevin wanted to make a comment on that, because that's just, that's kind of, I I kind of have. Guiltily, you know, slunk and not made any comments at these other meetings where the other council members were talking about how. Large their allocations were, not try trying not to draw too much attention to the fact that we're we're actually, it looks like we're getting off pretty easy, so.
So just to pull it up, it looks like Healdsburg is four hundred and seventy six units. Um and Windsor is nine hundred and ninety four units.
Right, and that's because due to their job growth.
If if I can add to uh the numbers that Alex provided, and and that's. That that's accurate, you know, consistent with the numbers I'm seeing in the in the in the Rena table that was issued by A bag. Uh what the M T C did this year i- is part of the Rena allocation process. Was adjust the Rena numbers uh under what they're calling an equity adjustment. The equity adjustment is a reflection of those jurisdictions approving market rate housing projects above. The percentage that was identified in their in their current Rena numbers. So for instance, of the nine hundred and ninety three units that is in uh Windsor's uh Rena allocation. For the sixth cycle, uh three hundred and forty one of those were an equity adjustment. Because of their approvals of other market rate housing projects. Uh likewise, Healdsburg had an equity adjustment. Of a hundred and seventy six, so of the four hundred and seventy six units are required, uh as or that is part of their allocation. Uh they had a a a equity adjustment of a hundred and seventy six. Uh wh- whereas Cloverdale, they actually, uh we had a, because of our um approval of projects like. For instance, Cloverdale Family Apartments, and and we did a fairly good job, and that speaks to council's uh uh support. Uh we we actually had a negative uh equity adjustment, they reduced uh our our total number of units by three, not a lot. But but it was a a a slight reduction in the arena allocation because of. Uh council's approval of of uh some affordable projects uh during the current uh fifth year cycle.
Thank you very much, um uh Planning Commissioner Waggy.
Um thank you very much for very interesting uh presentation. I had a question on. It's on slide twenty three, it says restrict on uh S P three thirty. Restricts demolition of existing residential units, I I wish you could give a little. Yeah. No, I I'm looking, I'm sorry, it's an older slot, I guess it's an earlier version, yeah, no, it's there. How does that play if if you're redeveloping part of of some exa- like, I think it was the um. Cherry Creek Development, um existing units were demolished and then new units are being replaced at a much higher density.
So there are um a number of exceptions to that, so it's different, it depends based on, you know. When was the last time it was occupied to, you know, if it was residential, it hasn't been occupied, I think in seven years. It doesn't apply. If the units are being reconstructed and the old tenants are offered, you know. The right to occupy the new units, that may be an, that's an exception as well, so there are a number of exceptions. Um but the the point of the bullet was just sort of to highlight that there are restrict, new restrictions on demolition. Of units that wouldn't have um didn't necessarily apply before. With the idea, I I think from legislature being, they didn't want developers to come in by what is maybe naturally affordable. Housing and build a brand new market rate, you know, building and displace existing tenants.
Thank you, Commissioner Asay. Chad, you had your hand up.
I did, but you actually answered one of my questions um about the connection permit, so my my, well, I'll ask it to clarify it a little further. Uh Mister Mog, and that is, with the uh water impacts that we could have potentially in the future. Um could that be an impact, you know, with the drought or with losing the the our 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 base of our water through the Russian River? Could that lead to the impact being a reason for us to uh deny a water connection permit?
Uh yeah, yeah, so there definitely the ongoing drought now um and the drought emergency is a valid reason. For the the council to to co- you know, prevent any new water connection fees, which. You know, doesn't prevent the construction of new housing, but prevents it from being occupied. Um and uh and that is valid, the council did that, and we think there's a strong support for that. Um as, you know, but once those restrictions are lifted, if they're lifted at some point and, you know, the fu- future. You know, maybe two years down the road, then there would no longer be justification for that.
Thank you, any other commissioners or council members to make a comment? Okay, uh Sandra, please.
Your mayor. My question is in regards to the density bonus law. On the density bonus law, it says that if a project is located one half mile of a major transit stop. The applicant can receive a high increase of up to three additional stories with his incentive or his concessions. So that means that, so we have a maximum of three feet, they can go an additional three feet, uh three, three stories, I'm sorry. Three stories, so um but they have to meet the criteria of a major transit stop. So my first question is, what is the criteria for a major tra- transit stop? And then the second question is, if we have a project and they wanna increase the density. Our maximum is three, the height of um three stories, are they allowed to go higher than that? Or does that only apply to the transit uh stop area? Thank you.
To to answer your second question first, um you know, if someone qualified in the city had a three. You know, fleet, uh three height, li- three floor height limit. Uh they were, and they were in that area, they would be able to add three floors onto that, so to go up to six floors. Um if that was the limit, there there is a definition of what a major transit stop is in the law, so. One thing it is, is any sort of commuter rail stop, so a smart train stop would qualify as that. Um the others um connect, the other um way, or like a ferry stop would also qualify. The other way you can qualify is by having sort of multiple high frequency bus stops. Um that serve a location, so if a bus stop is, has, I think it needs to have two lines. With a frequency of at least every uh twenty minutes during rush hour hours. Um in order to qualify um as a major transit stop, and and that might not be, it might be every fifteen minutes. I I don't remember like exact off the top of my head, but that's sort of the what qualifies as a major transit stop.
Thank you.
So so um I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
He was answering that question, uh so right now Cloverdale does not meet that requirement, correct? Okay, then the second question was on projects that are high density, so say for instance, he's doing a project that's a hundred percent. Affordable housing, so our maximum is three feet, and it's not located within the that half a mile uh from the transit. Are they allowed to go exceed that three foot if they use one of their bonuses?
Right, so they would be, if they could use one of their incentives to exceed that that three story limit. Um and or that three, whatever, thirty feet limit it might be, they could use that. Um they would really only be allowed to exceed it to the extent necessary to fit in. Um the number of units they're entitled to, so if if they were, you know, if they were allowed to build thirty units there. They couldn't say, we need that, you know, uh I don't know, a four hundred foot building, because you don't need four hundred feet to. Uh build thirty units, maybe you need to go from thirty feet to forty feet, but you don't, you know, there's, there's a limit on how far. You know, you can go, and and that, you just have to look at the individual um application. And then you know sort of how strong your pushback can be from the developer based on what the actual project is, what what they're requesting. What standards apply to that, you know, that parcel.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa, please.
Thank you, um one of the first thoughts I had when you were discussing um their incentives. And their ability to um kind of override certain zoning com- um. Zoning areas and zoning laws that we have in place, and you mentioned fire zones, um. I was thinking, is that something that we can reassess and reclassify a fire zone? And my initial thought is that we have um experienced a lot of threats, you know, a lot of fires. In our river lately, and generally, our high fire zone was um out past River Road, Geysers Road area. Because we've always had that buffer of the vineyards and the river, and now the fire is coming from the river area. And in what is normally, I believe, classified as a moderate fire zone. So is that something that we could consider now that we have um kind of new threats and a higher fire danger? In this drought, and combined with the drought situation?
It it is, you know, maybe a possibility, I would say though in general. If the fire map that the city wants to adopt does not match sort of the state fire map. It's not going to be as defensible, um so if the state is not updating its fire risk map. Or or you know FEMA uh updating its fire risk map to identify the river area, it's. It's vulnerable to challenge, you know, maybe the city could come up with enough findings to to justify it, but it's not gonna be as strong as if. The the state, you know, adopted that map.
Okay, and then my other question is, um let's say that a project complies. But they don't have any incentives to change um their zoning. If we choose to uh change the zoning, does it have to meet their request? Their their amount of units, or can we negotiate and do a a different amount of units?
So so if you're saying they they have a project and they are requesting to waive some zoning requirement. For, yeah, so in that case, they um it has to be for the number of units they are entitled to. Uh you know, we can certainly, as a city, ask and work with uh the developer and, you know, you will find sort of the range. Of developers out there, there are some developers who who wanna be good and wanna accommodate and and will listen and modify their projects. And say, you know, we can take off a um a unit, or you know what, what my work over here is, we can. We'll only have a ten foot setback on the ground level, but for floor two, we'll do a step up. And we'll step it back more so it doesn't feel as bulky, there'll be developers that are willing to work with you, there are also developers, unfortunately. That won't be willing to for whatever reason, um and if they draw a hard line, you know, the city, they have the right to. Make those concessions based on the number of units they'd be entitled to.
Thank you, uh Kevin, did you want to add something to that answer?
Just wanted to say, we work closely with the fire district, and it's pretty clear that they can only serve a three story building. So um you know, it's hard to argue with that, and there could even, you know, if someone really puts that issue, there might be an ability to make. Findings of health and safety going beyond three stories, um just, you know, for fire protection.
Thank you, uh Vice Mayor Lance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Alex, for a a very great presentation, it's very informative. And very enlightening, um to say the least, because I'm new to this council and uh I didn't know any of this. To this extent at least, and so I I appreciate everything you're doing to uh to say in very layman's terms. So I I have a lot of notes and I I all go as fast as I can, and I'm sure that a lot of it's already been answered, and so uh we'll get through this pretty quickly. We talked about the health and safety, safety standards, um right now, we all know we don't have the natural resources, but we haven't had them for quite a while. We've actually done a twenty five percent uh cut in our water since twenty fourteen on top of this twenty five percent. And we don't have the water capacity or the sewer capacity in our town for uh this large of a growth. Um on top of that, we don't have uh seats for kids for that type of growth. Can this be considered a health and safety standard that we could use? And you're on mute.
Sorry about that, um no, I I would say, you know, for the time being, at least, we certainly can use the the lack of water. As a as a basis, um over the long term, it's sort of an, it's an unknown, you know, as as. The drought is probably not going well, you know, maybe it gets a little better, but it's sort of a more of a permanent thing, I think that's sort of an open question of whether. Um oh you know, what, how that plays out, I the legislature and some of the bills they are considering this year, like. Exempts certain areas based on, you know, high fire danger, they don't want building in the high fire danger, or or some of these things that they didn't. Maybe take into as consideration in their first sort of couple of rounds of these bills that they're now taking more into consideration. But I'd say at this point, that's an open question. As for the schools, I think unfortunately, it's it's not something that the legislature has basically said, well, schools can charge these impact fees. Even though the impact fees are usually not sufficient, and and that's what it is, and that's all, the cities can't do anything about that. Um so I think unfortunately, as to the school, the city doesn't have a pa- has to, you know, capacity of the schools, the city doesn't have a lot of. Leverage on that issue.
So then, um the next thing, let me go through here real quick if you don't mind, I'm trying to go through the ones we've already answered. Uh without the parking spots, when you have affordable and low income housing, it it cuts out the ability for people to go to work. Um I know one of our projects that's on our books is almost two hundred parking spots short in in their paperwork. And it's being allowed through, and with that, you're going to end up with people that have nowhere to go. And we're at almost ninety percent of our people work out of town already in our low income town. And so I'm wondering what we can do about that, about re- requiring some type of parking spot or something other than the. One per bedroom and one and a half for two to three, is there anything that we can do that says that we have to give them something? Because we don't have the transit here.
Un- unfortunately, there isn't, the legislature has made this sort of one, one size fits all approach. Um, and there isn't really a, a way to get around that. If, you know, if that's what the developer wants to push there, you know, there's not, you know, the city can try to work to make more street parking available. Or, or things like that, uh, or you know, or residential parking to make sure residents can park in that area and only residents. But other than that, there's not, not a ton that the city can do to force more onsite parking.
So then my next question would be, um, one of the i- ideas that has been passed around to the city council is almost like a lighting and landscape district. And I apologize for not remembering what it was called because it was before I was on the council. However, would that, something like that be a subjective standard that we couldn't even enforce at this point?
So, uh, uh, you know, I'm not sure exactly what the idea was, but like, uh, if it was an assessment district to pay.
I'll, I'll, I can explain a little bit further if you want, Alex, what it was, i- is basically, we, we, we don't have the water and sewer for the people that, uh. We want to bring in, so that we wanted to have basically like a, a slush fund for the money to be put into their and out of their taxes on top of the regular taxes. For when their streets need to be fixed, sidewalks need to be fixed, pipe need to be fixed, it came out of their own money.
Yes, so, so like a benefit assessment district that someone paid into every year, that would be an objective standard. You know, just like a property ta- normal property taxes would be.
So, so we could uh impose that upon.
Yeah, I mean, a, a assessment district generally has to be approved by the, the voters impacted when it's first formed. Uh, but if someone comes in after that and develops that, they would be subject to that.
And then I, I know our, arena number was two hundred and seventy eight and, you know, we were kind of bragging about how great that is. But the pro- the reason is because uh we have a really low income uh town here as well, so we've already hit a lot of our numbers. What would happen if we hit our two hundred and seventy eight that broke down the way that it was? If we did that, can we start denying at that point?
So, uh, uh, when, um, some of these other laws like SB thirty five wouldn't apply. You can't use SB thirty five in a, um, a town, so you can't do that streamlined ministerial review. A project would still be able to go through the city's normal process and, you know. Normal review process have to comply with existing standards. Um, but at that point, you, you know, you couldn't do that. You also have the ability, um, sort of, if you built all that you've wanted. You have the ability sort of to change your zoning too without the same restrictions. If you haven't built what you want, what is required, and you, um, wanna downzone the parcel. You need to show that you can fill those units someplace else, but if you've already met that requirement, it's easier to make that. Uh, take that action.
So if we hit the two seventy eight number, we as a council or planning commission could deny these projects and not be subjected to that.
I, I wo- I wouldn't say that you could deny them totally, I mean, each project I would come in differently. Um, and you have to look at each project, you know, whether it had any affordable components or those sorts of things, might change rules. You could, they wouldn't be subject or allowed to go through the streamlined process that SB thirty five provides. And I think it'd be easier to deny a project, but, you know, I don't wanna say you could, we'd have complete authority to deny it.
Um, David and Kevin, could you comment on how this impacts the long term? Vision and plan for the city in terms of, we're just not planning for. Uh, compliance with government regulations, but also there is a. It's, just a second. I am looking for clarification and I can request this for, for this particular statement. It's important people understand that there is a general plan for the city, that there is a vision. And that perhaps we need to understand how all this fits into that vision and that general plan that has been voted by. The council in the past, so uh it's not, it, it's not just like it's subjective. Uh, numbers that we are playing with, so I really would like to, to hear. Uh, about this before we move on with this particular issue. It's important that, that we see how it all merges together, uh, David.
Ma- Madam Mayor, I, I think, you know, council needs to look at this, um, you know, comprehensively. What, what has been provided tonight uh by our legal counsel is an overview. Of some recent housing legislation and identifies, you know, what impact that has. On how you as a council and a commission uh process these projects. And certainly has an impact on, on, on uh staffs processing and bringing it forward as well. Uh, but there's still, a- a- and, 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 uh, Alex talked about this, those objective standards. Which are set by your, uh, uh, and, and the city's general plan and zoning ordinance. And, you know, tonight, we're not necessarily having a robust discussion about all of the elements of the general plan. And how those all uh interrelate uh to uh e- e- each other. Um, because there are, there are other elements of the general plan, including, um, you know, circulation and land use. And so i- i- it's really important that we, while we are focusing in on, on housing. We, we still look at those other goals of the general plan and how those projects relate to those goals. Um, and i- it's hard without having all those in front of us to, to have a, a focused discussion. Uh, about how the, the interrelationship of the general plan policies. Uh, but I, I, I think that, that could be a, a certainly a follow-up discussion. And so, i- in, any, really what's necessary i- for, for council and commission is. To, um, look at each project independently in, in terms of. Its consistency with the general plan and all of its elements, including the housing element, but also including these other laws. That now affect how uh you, i- you may ultimately make a decision on these projects. So, um, you know, I think, and, and that, the, it's incumbent upon staff when we. Uh, bring projects forward or we, or projects submitted to us and we're reviewing their application. To look at the comprehensive set of, uh, general plan and zoning policies and, and other laws that you've enacted by resolution. Uh, that pertain to safe water usage, for example, uh, and water conservation. Um, but, you know, really tonight, we're focused on kind of the housing side of, uh, the general plan. Where, and its housing element and, and the laws that, uh, the state has enacted that. Uh, in some regards, in a lot of regards, kind of preempt some of your decision-making ability. So, um, i- 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 you know, I, I realize it's a very general answer, um, and, and it's difficult. To give a specific answer without kind of starting to drill down on a specific project. So, I hope, I hope that responds to your, kind of, I think where you were going with your question, Mayor, but uh. Uh, we could certainly talk about that in, in more detail if you like.
Yes, because we need to take into account that this not, uh, this is not the unique answer to what's happening in Cloverdale or what will happen. This is just one element of information that we need in order to, to comply and to move on with the general plan. Or perhaps modify that, so that we know how far we can go based on the law. So, uh, this is, this is what I really wanted to make sure that the public understands too. It's not just one isolated item, it is something that merges in with the general plan and the vision of the city. And it will, it will be our policy perhaps to adapt or to modify that general plan. And, and this is why it's so important that we understand the law, but it's not absolute or independent from. Um, so, please, um, uh, Vice Mayor Lance, I hope you understand what the position is. Because we cannot just say this is it.
Oh, I, I understand, and I totally do, and I understand our general plan that we have that was made prior to me being here. And the ideas that some people have. Um, my idea obviously is not to cram ten pounds of you know what into a five pound sack, and that is basically what this, these laws are allowing. And so, I, I just, I, I'm taking the small town that I grew up in for forty four years. And seeing it that in five years, it can, it can double in size and, and have nothing here for anyone. And it's really sad to me, it's disheartening, and I know people can sit there and laugh on my Zoom and I love it because it's fine. We will move forward and do things as we can that California allows, but what I would ask Alex of you is. As the attorney for the city council and for the city, that we come up with some ways. That, or conditions that we can control or slow the growth that we have here and find the gray areas to help us keep our small town the way it is. And not let it turn into a dumping ground or, or just a whole bunch of, uh, three plus story housing developments with nothing for anyone in this town. So, that's where I'll stop for now, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Waggy, please.
I was just curious how the, um, sewer capacity fits in with the water moratorium, if it's somehow connected. Or if it's just a separate item.
It, it's a separate item, David, I don't know if you can speak on that a little more.
I, I think that's, I think that's accurate, um, uh, Alex, and to, to Commissioner Waggy's comment or question. I, I, I really do think it is separate, uh, but, but related. We, we actually are, um, in the process of completing a, 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 a capacity calculator. That will enable the commission to, uh, look at capacity o- o- of individual projects. Uh, so you, you can, you know, understand what their demand on both, uh, our water system and our wastewater system is. And what the impact on capacity is i- i- if those projects are approved. Uh, the, the water issue i- is, i- is more, more significant from the perspective of. Uh, you, you know, that directly relates to, uh, health, uh, health and safety. And, and the lack thereof of, of adequate, you know, water to, to serve, uh, and, and meet our community needs. Whereas, whereas the wastewater system is, is more of a, you know, the technical capacity uh of the plant. And, um, our, our, our understanding based on the work we've done is we have a sufficient capacity to support. Uh, growth in accordance with the, the general plan projections.
Thank you, Mr. Waggy and City Manager, uh, Commissioner Cox, please.
Thank you, um, uh, and remembering that, uh, our general plan, I believe, was last updated post two thousand and five. I think it was more like two thousand and nine, uh, and it was, pardon me the expression, but only approved by the council. Not as a, uh, an act of the voters, uh, so it seems to me that SB thirty five. The Housing Accountability Act, SB three thirty, and the density bonus kind of walks all over our general plan. If we're not real careful in how we implement, uh, our general plan and how we, uh, uh, approach each and every application.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Paula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I don't really have a question, I just, um, you know, I understand the state's needs. Uh, wanting to have housing available for all income levels, but I find it really disappointing. That they're not allowing us as a community throughout the state to at least consider public input. From our residents that are impacted by all these different projects. It does impact quality of life issues, it impacts our schools, it impacts a lot of things within the community. Yet, as you mentioned, Alex, and thank you for the well-done presentation, but as you mentioned, the one size fits all. And, and that's unfortunate because not every city is one size. And when they put these one size fits all regulations, it impacts everybody. And our residents, they want to have some input, doesn't mean we shouldn't have a goal of the two hundred and seventy eight houses. It just means that we should at least consider the impacts and try to mitigate those. Not necessarily disappoint or disapprove them, but just see if we can come to some consensus. But basically, we have no power as a community if they meet within these conditions. So, it's very disappointing, it's very frustrating, and I know the people in the community are very upset about a lot of different rumors. That are going around about these big projects that are on the drawing board. And, uh, so I just wanted to share that thought, I mean, I know our schools are definitely impacted by this. I know that there's a lot of issues with water and, uh, you know, Lake Sonoma is not growing. If we have a good year this year, doesn't mean we're not gonna have a bad year next year. So adding more uses to the, to the water supply until we really fix and have a good, adequate water supply. It's just, just compounding these problems as we, so again, I, I just wanted to share my thoughts, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, um, Councilmember Bagby.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I, Councilmember Paula, I think you meant Linkman Sino, not Lake Sonoma. Great, because there's enough misinformation out there. Um, and one of the first things that, that really concerns me is, um, the idea that the general plan is something that, that council, you know, previous councils made up. Whatever it better on, the fact is, is that they are our general plan, which I was a part of long before I was on council and Councilmember Paula was part of it. Uh, former Mayor Cox, um, you know, uh, Councilmember Walter. Uh, I, I think I saw Vice Mayor, uh, Lance at a, a meeting at Citrus Fair at least once or twice. That's, that, that general plan is a vision for our entire community, and I, we, it sounds like we need to have a ref- refreshed course on this. It's not a policy that was made and mandated by elected officials. It's very, very important that the public, you know, reaches back and remembers that. Is it, the, our general plan revision, our last one, was done with, um, hundreds, if not thousands of Cloverdale residents giving input. It was the product of hundreds of hours of staff time. It was the product of, um, outreaches, um, meetings at the Veterans Hall, meetings at Citrus Fair. Meetings at the, at the senior center, um, and hours and hours uh at, on the planning commission. And, um, we were, I was finishing up when I was first appointed to, uh, the planning commission. And when I was, um, on the planning commission with, um, with Commissioner Cox. So, the idea that, um, that the, the, the general plan is arbitrary. And was done by previous elected officials, it's just wrong and it's misinformation, it was a community effort. Um, the idea that, um, that this, these new state regulations completely obliterate the vision. For the community that was created, I, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Paula, I don't completely agree with that. I, um, I believe that we've just been educated about the new realities in state law around housing. But that doesn't change the spirit of the general plan that was created. Um, it doesn't change, um, the zoning areas that, that we've created, where we've designated, where we, we definitely. Doesn't completely change and it changes some of the implications a little bit. Um, around transit oriented development and about, about density. But it's something that we can adjust to, and it's something that we need to address too. Because while we still have people in the community, uh, and, you know, and their opinion is absolutely valid because it's their opinion. They don't wanna see this town changed, they don't wanna see growth, they don't wanna see new people coming in here. The fact is, is that I get contacted all the time by, um, people who are multi-generation Cloverdalean saying. You know, my kid just got a job as, at a hospital or at a winery, and they can't afford to buy a house here. Um, I hear concerns from local employers all the time that, um, they can't attract the employees that they need. For the businesses that are owned by the entrepreneurs who are the backbone of this community. So, um, yeah, we're, we're gonna have to change, and I, I really, I don't like the term growth. Because to me, growth is like a cancer, growth is out of control, growth is sprawl, but this community does need to develop. We do need to bring more people into a walkable, bikeable downtown that can support local businesses and a local economy. So, instead of, you know, this turning into a big battle for people who are like, I don't want new people here. Or people who are like, well, I want new people here, why don't we just get real and just say. We do need to diversify our housing stock and take this opportunity to do so. But let's also, you know, and let's, let's stay in reality land here. I mean, I, I love that Sondra brought up, she was like, well, we don't, are people gonna be able to put, you know, an extra three feet on? you know, an extra three feet on a development? Well, first of all, no, we don't live. We don't, we don't have that kind of transit here that would require that. And secondly, the fire department and the fire district wouldn't have, can't approve anything that they don't have equipment for. Problem solved. You know, are you know, what's the city doing approving new development? Well, we're not. We have a development moratorium. Because basically, I mean, here's the situation with water, okay? This is the way I think about it, is that we went, we had a serious cardiac event. And we went to the cardiologist. And she said, you know what? You're gonna need to change your diet, your lifestyle, you're gonna need to manage your stress. And you're gonna need to change how you live. We're not doing a quadruple bypass tomorrow. That's not where we're at yet. We could very well be, and the alarm and the concern of people in the community, I'm actually really, really happy to see it because we have a really serious problem where water is concerned. We need to take it seriously and we need to address it, but we're not gonna have a quadruple bypass tomorrow. That's not where we're at. So I just was hope, I'm hoping that we can use this information tonight to kind of tone down the rhetoric, get real. And let's use this as an opportunity to work together and do the realistic thing because this community is, you know, we we first of all, we, you know, if we want new roads, we want to improve our roads, if we want to improve our sewers, we need to expand our tax base. And the best way to do that for us is to take this information, which we're gonna be required to do by law, and make it work for us. Instead of just being, you know, combative and um and and saying that I think saying things that we don't want. What can we do? And now I think that's the information that we need to hear from Alex. What can we do? And also, I would admit, I would, I would advise staff. One thing that was missing from the beginning of his intro is why are we here and what are we doing tonight? And I, so I would like actually the city manager at some point to hop on and say, how do we use this information as council members and as planning commissioners going forward so that we can make informed decisions and um give information to the public that's accurate and helpful?
Thank you. Um, it is eight thirty and I would like to give an opportunity to the public to make a couple of comments and questions. And after that, we need to take a little break before we go to the second part of the presentation. Okay, so uh, thank you very much, and we can bring this back and talk some more if um, this is the opportunity to do so. We don't get to be legal altogether, and we need to take advantage of that. Okay? All right. Let's get started. Uh, welcome, Leanne.
Hi, how are you? I'm dipping out on this conversation. Um, Alex, I just have a question for you. What is the state's definition of a jurisdiction or city? Melanie, Irving Worth, Urbanist, haha. Cloverdale is not an urban community by definition. Chad, Melissa, Bob, and Eric, I love seeing your faces. What is the capital plan budget? The general plan is gone.
Did we lose you? Leanne? Stop the clock. Possibly. She still shows unmuted. Leanne? Leanne, could you finish your statement, please? Okay, we'll come back. Uh, Debbie?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Great. Okay, thanks. Um, thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. I was actually looking back and I've been doing some planning for the Health Center on increased populations and looking at our current approved projects. And it seems to me that, you know, right now, just the approved projects that we have on the low income is at two hundred and forty eight units. So we're almost to the two hundred and seventy eight um mandate. Regardless, just with the current um approved projects that are going on, we're not very far off. Um, I appreciated Todd's question about what happens when we hit that um number that we're assigned, and that's assigned over an eight year period, I believe, or a five year period. And and I believe the answer that I was hearing was that we can then re the city have the ability to rezone areas. Is that correct? Um, anyone, anyone on the council can answer that. But um, that's kind of what my comment was, is that it seems like we're pretty much there um to the requirement that the state or the um housing, housing um corporation, whatever they're called, um has has levied on us. So that was it for me.
Uh, next we have Renee.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so if to add on to Debbie's uh comment, if I'm understanding correctly, we've only got thirty units approximately to put into place in the next few years. Is that correct? And presuming that that is correct, um, what is the typical, this probably is a question for Alex, for um benchmarking other cities, um for that kind of number, number, do cities go out and just basically woo a developer to try to get in um one project that covers um that small amount of units that need to be covered. Um, you know, I'm kind of looking at what would be the strategy that would make sense for Cloverdale if it's a small number, but if the number is bigger, that's why I want to make sure that the line in the sand is the two seventy eight. It's actually minus the two forty eight that Debbie just mentioned. Can somebody, can Alex answer that question or somebody else?
Mayor, uh, if I can, if if you all, I'll offer a response, at least a clarification and then uh seek guidance from from Alex. I I just want to note that the Rena numbers that we're referring to for the sixth cycle uh start in twenty twenty three. So that's um what we're what we're sharing with council this evening is really the forecast for the Rena numbers for the next cycle. That hasn't begun yet. Uh, uh, MTC is still in the font, is in the final process of uh the final allocation numbers for each of the jurisdictions, uh cities and counties within within the the regional Bay Area of the Association of Bay Area Governments. So that the the numbers aren't aren't quite set in stone yet, but we anticipate that that will happen in the near future. However, we are in
Oh, sorry. Yeah, go ahead, David. Sorry.
And we can identify, you know, where we're where we are relative to the existing uh regional housing needs allocation arena numbers. And we would need to have uh our our planning team of Kevin and Rafael uh provide an update on that. We every year prepare a report that is submitted to Housing and Community Development, the state agency, uh that provides uh an update on how we are making progress on meeting our our regional housing needs assessment, our allocation numbers. And that usually goes to council, I mean, excuse, goes to commission uh every March. Uh, and then subsequently to to council for for final ratification. So Kevin, if you if you if you have some additional information you want to offer relative to our existing numbers, please please add.
No, I just wanted to mention that, I mean, the the numbers that we provided to you are for this current cycle, the two seventies for the next. And I think David basically just said that, so.
And and I I just wanted to offer that that those those numbers um also really reflect issuance of building permits. And so that that the just want to note that there's a difference between approval of projects and actual issuance of building permits. Uh, approving a project doesn't always equate to to a building permit.
And just to add one thing, Mayor, um to clarify, when the city, if if and when the city meets its Rena uh obligations, it that doesn't mean that the city can necessarily disapprove any new housing project. It takes away some of these streamlined processes that the state has set up or other means of curtailing this the state's uh city's authority. But a project that came in, um, and you know, was a project that complied with all of the city's standards. You know, that still might be something the city um had to approve. But it wouldn't be something that could sort of be streamlined quickly and and move without any public process.
Okay, so if the new number is then two seventy eight for the new cycle, then kind of back to my benchmark question for other cities, um our size, you know, do they just go out and look for um kind of woo a developer for a plot of land and say, let's get the two seventy eight in there plus, you know, an additional X amount to make it feasible for them, or do you end up chipping away, you know, five units, ten units at a time?
Um, normally, I would say, well, I would say in general, most cities don't hit their their Rena goals or or really even get close to them. At least that's how it's been in the last cycle. Um, and cities approach it different ways. They might try to attract someone. It's sort of hard to attract someone though, these options are limited. In the in the olden days, there were redevelopment agencies that had, the city had a redevelopment agency, or there were redevelopment agencies that helped fund affordable housing projects. Um, the city's resources to do that now are are very limited. Um, a- and so there's just, you know, different jurisdictions take different approaches. They may not even many don't don't care or, you know, attempt to meet it and sort of just left a chance whether a developer or property owner comes along.
Okay, thank you very much. That's helpful to know.
Next we have Preston.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm speaking as the spokesperson for the Cloverdale Unified School District today. Um, thank you. It's apparent that the city staff, Planning Commission, and City Council have invested a lot of time into this over the years. Um, just for perspective, we've been trying to address being able to fund classrooms for incoming students over the last almost five years now that I've been on the school board. Um, developer fees, I I I'll just say honestly are a joke. Uh, the average amount of money that you get for developer fees for a unit are four to eight thousand dollars. That will build you a toilet stall. It it won't connect the plumbing. It won't put a floor under it. It won't put a roof under it. It won't put walls around it. It's about enough money to put a toilet with wall with a surround around it in the middle of the soccer field. That that's really it. Um, you know, the average bathroom for a school costs half a million dollars. So um what the state's leaving us with as developer fees is really a joke for addressing the needs of our kids. Um, we would like the state and the city to to consider that um education is just as much an essential plank of a community's infrastructure as water, sewer, and our city streets. And um, you know, if we go and put three hundred affordable housing units in without any ability to build classrooms for those kids, it's it's going to be impossible to to educate the voters and the citizens of our democracy that are coming into our community. We're not anti-growth at all, but um there there is a cost to these things. And I know I'm speaking to the choir. I know the city and the council and the planning commission know what infrastructure costs. And schools are part of that infrastructure. So um I just, I think it's rather short sighted of the state to impose this on our city without also coming in with the 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 funds to support the infrastructure. And that's um what you will hear from us as a school district is that we want to educate these kids. We want these kids. We want to grow our programs. We want to grow our school district. Some sort of growth is how our economy is designed, and we want that. But there's a cost to put the infrastructure in place to make that possible. And the schools just don't have it. The developer fees that the state determines, these aren't determined by the city, they're determined by the state, come nowhere near what the cost of housing these students is. And just for consideration, you know, if we look at, if you put eighty units in and you have one point five students per unit, you're looking at a hundred and twenty students. That's, that's huge. Our average school in our city has approximately four hundred students. And we just don't have the infrastructure to house that. So we're just asking to um to have that there as a consideration, to consider educating our kids as part of the infrastructure of our city. And we're ready and willing to work with everybody involved here to make sure that we have that infrastructure in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Helen.
Good evening, Cloverdale City Council. Good evening, Planning Commission. Alex, the more you talk, the less I, the worse I feel. I agree with Bob Cox. It feels like the state has come in and usurped all the power and all of that effort and planning we've put toward getting feedback and making a general plan and and making what's ideal for our city is just thrown out the window. And I agree with Todd Lanz. We need to act where we can. And I agree with Melanie. What can we do? Alex, what can we do? Can we work on our fees to make the fees a lot higher so that they actually pay the real cost that Preston is talking about? Can they pay the real cost of school and the real cost of parks? And maybe the real cost of a parking garage that we might need to put in to accommodate all the cars since there aren't going to be any parking spaces. There must be impact fees we can deal with, right? Sewer impact fees, water hookup fees, park fees. We could use a lot more parks and rec departments in this town. And I've been traveling, and my favorite part about traveling is Delta Utah has a splash pad. I think we need a developer to make a splash pad. But they're they're very fun and it's, you don't need a lifeguard, so I recommend splash pads. And I agree that, you know, with the fire trucks, that right now we have a three story limit, but who's to say we can't mitigate that according to the state and get a bigger truck? And we're gonna end up with uh skyscrapers downtown. I'm gonna take my kids up for a walk in Clover Springs Open Space. And we're gonna look out at the downtown of Cloverdale, which is gonna be high rise after high rise. I'm very concerned. I'm glad that we have this time with the water. There's a moratorium on new buildings. But I do think the city council and should bring it up, that we should look at fees. We should really re look at our general plan and make sure that it's for the good of the town. And maybe we need to put something on the on the ballot so voters can vote so that the next time this comes up, at least the voters have said what they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Angela.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, there's quite a bit to cover. Um, what a great presentation, very informative. Thank you for that. Um, I think there's a lot to be discussed here. Emergency services will be impacted. Um, the more people we bring in, uh, Um, the more people we bring in, uh we don't have a big police department or a fire department. So that needs to be taken into consideration. Uh, everything Preston Addison said, he nailed it. Our schools are going to have a huge influx. That should matter. Our school size, our teachers, our our dilapidated buildings. Um, and and trust me, I'm all for low income housing. I have a twenty year old still at home who can't even afford to get her own place, but I'm I'm all for low income housing for everybody, not just certain classes like you know, our city council failed us when they failed to read the fine print and they approved the farm workers only apartments and the whole city was completely let down when people applied and and they got shot down. Um, I I am just completely shocked that there's an issue with uh no restrictions on parking that that, you know, that will have an adverse impact. Look at Ioli Ranch. You know, look at Clark Street. This is crazy. How is a how is a big fire truck supposed to get in there when the cars are just stacked on each other? Um, I want to shadow what Kevin said and the fire chief at one point. They can only accommodate three stories. Melanie Bagby saying, oh, nobody can prove that up. Yeah, the fire chief did prove that up. You're wrong. He was at the meeting. I don't know where you were. Joe Paula, you were absolutely right when you said the quality of life goes down. Uh, we're a small town. Why are we being included in big city plans? Has has city of Cloverdale taken any initiative to uh petition this, to write a letter? Um, I I don't I don't even know where you would write the letter. Maybe city attorney can answer that question. Um, where would you send a request to say, hey, you know, here's our concerns as a city, as city council, as a city manager, here's our concerns. Melanie Bagby, I mean, you need to get off your Bay Area soapbox. This is not the Bay Area. This is Cloverdale. Nobody ever said that I've ever heard that they don't want people here. Yes, the reality is we don't have the capacity at this moment to host all these people. Yes, Cloverdale does want to grow, but not overnight. You can't add hundreds and thousands of people to our little city with what little we have. This is not the Bay Area, so so get that out of your head. I don't know how to ex- anymore to explain that to you. Let's start working on our infrastructure and fixing what we have, all the crap that's broke down and fallen apart and headed that direction instead of acting uh uh inviting all these people here and having huge influx of people and not even addressing all the main issues.
Thank you. Next we have Claudia.
I think I am muted.
Yeah.
Is it showing that picture with the butterfly kiss during COVID?
Yeah.
That's cool. Somebody got to see it. Anyway, I just wanted to thank everybody and also um thank you, Alex, for explaining uh the the whole new uh the mandate. It was explained pretty well. Uh, one question I have for you is um I I've never heard of a parking space of one point five, so what is the point five? How does a person get a car in there? Um, it is a concern, you know, with with big high rises and stuff, and we are limited in parking spaces. And there are people who may not be able to climb stairs. They need an elevator and as far as the pandemic, people living in their own homes, I get that it's not not a concern, you know, with contact, but when you go in an elevator, if you go upstairs, there's going to be hand contact, so there is an element of, you know, spreading that along. Um, also uh due to, you know, the computer, the whole computer industry and stuff, it's it's decreased jobs. We've got rising costs, you know, the pandemic, et cetera. So I get the low income housing. What is a concern, and I'm glad a bunch of people brought it up, is where are we going to get the water from? Also, PD uh Cloverdale Police Department, we can't even as a city afford a new updated place for them. They are understaffed. They are working hard. They're working long hours. They don't have enough people. And and I'm sure the same with uh Cloverdale Fire Department. You know, we are just inundated with the homeless issue of starting fires. And it's just lots going on about that and then the key, the drought, the heat. Uh, let's see, so trying to rush through this quickly. Um, already hit that point. Then also, I mean, we've got protected mountain lions, even though I'm not a fan of them roaring behind my house. We've got protected species and stuff, so we have to leave room for them also. And they are protected per state or United States, whichever it is. Uh, going back to Melanie, uh uh Joe Paula and Mel- uh Melanie Bagby's comments about Lake Sonoma. I get what Paula was saying about Lake Sonoma. Yes, Lake Sonoma, I was told uh the water goes to Healdsburg and further south. We are from Lake Mend- from Lake Mendocino. But we live so close to Lake Sonoma, it is really hot here. So Lake Sonoma, we love to go boating and go into the water and stuff, so if those resources are depleted, we will not have that. So um I am for growth. I am for updating, but this is a small town. We have limited space. Uh, going back to, yeah, and then also, you know, as far as Lake Sonoma, I mean, they want to build four hundred and seventy six in Healdsburg, Windsor nine hundred and ninety four. Where's the water going to come from? I read that uh Nestle was allotted a certain amount of of water in Southern California. They are going after Nestle because they stole a bunch of water. If they get them, why not use that money to help build our reservoirs, to build it up bigger, because we don't know where this is going to go. Right now, I mean, this could take, this could take quite a few years for, you know, the water to build back up again. Hopefully it will.
Thirty seconds, Claudia.
Okay, and then let's see. Yeah, I mean, Lake Sonoma is for our funds, so I pretty much uh hit all of it. And I'm just curious. Um, what is the one and a one and a half parking spaces? We do need the parking here. It's we, it's just that's a lot of houses and, you know, to walk, you know, blocks with with groceries or whatever. You know, up flights of stairs, you know, it's 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 an important issue. So if you could please, Alex, explain what the one point five parking space is.
So the, excuse me, the one point five, it's one point five spaces per unit, so when you have a a a project with more than one unit, you would multiply it by one point five. So like if someone was proposing to build a four unit, like a fourplex, um and it was one point five, that would be four times one point five. So that complex would need to have six parking spaces for that that entire complex. Um, and then, you know, the owner of the complex would determine how to divvy up those six parking spots. Um, but that's that's what's meant by one point five.
Thank you, Alex.
Next we have Andrea or Andrea.
Hey, you know, I'm going to make it simple. I think I've been listening to everybody and I just wanted to shadow uh Todd Lanz. Thank you for what you said. I totally agree. And with the council member Joe Paula and Angela and and Preston and other citizens, I'm like a third generation citizen. And I've watched this town grow. I love it, but it's growing. You guys want to grow faster than it needs to be. Melanie back back me, she needs to like realize she's trying to grow too fast. This is a country. I moved from Petaluma. That's a big city. It's grown almost like Sacramento. You've got this big box city looking. You don't want that here in Cloverdale. You need to grow it. We all need growth. We need that to survive, but do it slow. We're having sewer problems, water problems. The schools can't grow that quick. We're already seeing growth coming in here in town now and we don't have room for it. So my whole point is I just want to support growing, but do it the right way. Don't bring in this big town too quick. Make sure the city council has authority to be able to say no to certain things. And it sounds to me like everything I heard tonight, they're not going to have that authority by allowing this low income to come into town. It should be all income for all people. Don't go for those packages that have conditions that the city council cannot talk up for. So that's all I have to say. I'm not a a good talker, but I just want to say, keep it small. Let it grow slow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Trudy.
Hi, thank you. Um, this was a very informative presentation. Thank you very much. Um, I am not opposed to more housing. Um, breaks my heart when I hear about families that are split up when their kids and grandkids can't afford to stay in Sonoma County. Um, but like everybody else, I'm concerned about the infrastructure, the water and the sewer and the schools and public safety. Um, and I'm hoping, I'm not clear on the process. Um, but going forward, I'm hoping that the public has the opportunity to provide input in person if they want to. Zoom, I know we've had to do it by Zoom, but it is so disenfranchising for um technically challenged residents. And even people like me, it's really frustrating that I can't even see who else from the community is attending. I can't talk to them. I can't look at facial expressions. And that's really, really important. So is there plans going forward to get public input in person for those who are willing to meet in person before any decisions are made on what we've heard about tonight? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next we have Sue.
Hi, um, this is Susan Verde, Cloverdale. Um, I want to thank council for hosting this meeting this evening. I did have two questions. Um, I am hearing low income and I'm hearing affordable housing. Those are two very different things and I would like more clarity on that and sort of have that defined. It's been a little bit confusing to hear both. And the second thing is, I'm just curious, uh, this is specific to something Melanie said about increasing our tax base to bring in more revenue, if I understood correctly, to help with the infrastructure like roads. In the time that I've lived here, our population has absolutely grown and I can absolutely not tell you where that money has gone. So I know that our schools are in ill repair. I know our streets are in ill repair. So I am just confused by that statement. So that would be a second question for clarification. Thank you again.
Alex, may you answer that, please?
Mute. Sorry, I was on mute. Um, so affordable housing a- as we meant, as I spoke about when I was using that term is uh housing units that are restricted to income by certain um individuals, you know, making certain income levels. Low income would be one of the classifications within affordable housing. There would also be moderate income or um, you know, very low income. And affordable housing would be sort of the umbrella term to talk about any sort of housing that is restricted for occupancy by people of a certain income level. Um, and I would just point out that some of these laws um are about, you know, uh affordable housing, you know, projects with affordable housing, but they're not necessarily a hundred percent affordable housing projects. They 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 may have market rate housing as well. They may be mostly market rate housing. So I just wanted to um add that point of clarification.
Next we have Garrett.
Hello, thank you, Town Council and staff. I'm I'm Cloverdale resident. I want to echo just about all my con- same concerns Todd Lanz had. I want to appreciate his his input on that. I want to for everybody out there who is worried, I just want to say that um, you know, I'm forty eight years old. It's nothing new. I couldn't afford my own place um to be, whether it be an apartment or otherwise, until I was probably nearly thirty. So for all you twenty year olds out there worried about it, don't worry, your time will come. I do have a question for uh Alex and maybe David. Um, and it's, you showed us a bunch of legislation that, you know, had come up, starting looked like from presumably earlier till later. And what I'm not clear on is if the city of Cloverdale meets its low income housing requirements, uh which if any of those would still even apply if we can meet our baseline requirements for low income housing? If I can defer to Alex or David, that'd be great. Thanks.
If the city meets its RENA numbers, which are, it's not just low income, but it they have to meet each category, so there has to be some very low income, mo- you know, low income moderate and above moderate, which is market rate. Then SB thirty five would not apply anymore. Um, the other laws would still apply. Um, uh, you know, the other laws would still apply this, but SB thirty five would not. It's the short, short answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. If I can retain my time and just say that is a bit disturbing that even if we do meet our uh low income housing requirements, which I'm all for, by the way, that we'd still be subject to uh certain um general plan uh nullifications from whatever developers want to do. And my other question is, and maybe you can't answer, maybe you will, maybe I need to look at on our own, but other people are kind of wondering around, you know, this meeting, how did this happen? Who can we talk to or whatever? I'm kind of curious as to if anybody knows what James Woods or Mike McGuire voted on these, especially the latest one in twenty nineteen. Um, I'm just throwing that out there as food for thought. Uh, I'll yield my time. Thank you very much.
We have one more to rest.
Yeah, Nicole.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, a few points and concerns that I have as a Cloverdale resident and newly business owner in town. Um, one, we really do not have a workforce that um I believe is attractive to um career fields per se. So something that I mentioned back with the interview process uh for the vacant seat is hosting um a job fair and to get industries involved and maybe having, you know, industrial building um in uh inviting in industries up to Cloverdale if we're going to, you know, be be um expanding our housing. Um, on the other end of that, we don't even have transportation up here. And if I've learned anything by being present on Food and Security Task Force on um different um forums is that a lot of families are struggling with vehicle and transportations and have been forced to actually work from home because of COVID. So that's a huge issue, because if we're sending people to the North Island of Sonoma County, um, how are they going to get to and from work? Where do you expect these people to work to pay for their housing? Um, you know, I think that that's really alarming as well. And if things go, you know, as as the council's planning and as, you know, Melanie and Marta are planning, then I would suggest that you demand more services for Cloverdale um for all of us as constituents, because we are forgotten about. And that was one thing why I ran for for city council, is because we are we are forgotten about. We don't have proper services. So if if we are going to comply with Sonoma County as a as a general uh play, as used to be as a as a uh as an outlet for housing, um then we need to have services available and be treated with the same respect and the same adequacy and um with the same intentment as Santa Rosa, Healdsburg especially, and Windsor. Thank you so much.
Any other hands, uh Irene?
No, their hands are raised, mayor.
Okay, I think we need to answer something to Nicole, and that is that the council members are in regional boards precisely to make sure that all decisions include Cloverdale and to make sure that Cloverdale has a voice. Um, that is one of the objectives of being in council, to have representation in regional and state boards. And fortunately, Melanie Bagby and myself are in many of those. And we are hoping uh that Vice Mayor Lance um will be joining like he was before in our division uh leadership. And we are hoping that Vice Mayor Lance will be joining like he was before in our division leadership, because he did a great job there. So we're looking forward to having our council members in regional boards in greater representation. At this point, we're going to take a 10 minute break. We'll be back at 10:16.
Recording stopped.
Okay, so let's call the meeting back to order. I'll bring you back to council and planning commission. Some last comments on the presentation. We have one more item to go. Any more discussion among the planning commission or the council?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Oh, now we're, now we're recording. Yeah. Kevin, do you think we're going to hit that 278 number?
It's hard, it's, it's hard to know. I mean, most, as Alex mentioned, I've never seen a city really meet their arena. I've worked in a lot of different cities. I've seen them close. There's things like the moderate income ones, which are really difficult to meet because there's not a lot of funding out there and those are usually done through inclusionary units on a big subdivision and things like that. So I would say, I mean, if I was, if you're asking my opinion, probably not. I mean, I've never been somewhere that has.
Okay, just to follow up to that, since we're not going to probably hit 278, how does that make us look like the Bay Area?
I think we're in the Bay Area Association of Governments.
No, how does it make us look like the Bay Area or Petaluma? But you're our community development director. I was hoping you could answer that question.
Well, I.
Is Cloverdale going to, like, we hit, he hit a number. We don't need that number. Are we going to fundamentally change the character of the community of Cloverdale?
I wouldn't think so, no. I mean, we.
That's your, that's your educated, well-educated community development director saying probably not. Thank you. I, yeah, the defense rests.
David, I would like for you to.
Actually, that was, that was my true colors. Yeah, because I'm a thinking rational person. And we have to keep these discussions in reality land. We're talking 278 units.
Council members, I need you to.
You're projecting again, my dear. Yeah.
Okay, Melanie and Todd, I need you to stop right now. I need for David to explain to the public, what is the government organization that we belong to in Cloverdale and in Sonoma County and why we have S C T A and A BAG?
Happy to address that question, mayor. Very good one. So the city of Cloverdale is within Sonoma County. And Sonoma County is one of the counties that is part of the Association of Bay Area Governments. And that has been established by, by the state legislature. So that, that, that process was put in place, I, I think is, is late as the 60s and it might be the early 70s when, when the Association of Bay Area Governments was initially established and it was put in place to help guide regional planning efforts. And, and it really is driven by the state and how it sets the, the, the regional planning organizations. Almost all parts of California, except for maybe some of the very rural counties, are in a regional planning entity. So even if you, if we were say to be part of Mendocino County, for example, which we're not, there, 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 there is a regional, you know, you're part of a, a, a regional planning area. So typically, no matter where you're located within Sonoma County, you're going to be within a, a, a regional planning jurisdiction that is going to provide guidance on terms of a number of housing units, transportation funding and, and other guidance that is going to affect how you develop as a community. So a lot of it has to do with how the state government has established itself and how it, it's decided to allocate funding in particular on, on a regional basis that comes through the federal government. There's a long history. It would take a long time to really delve into it, but that's kind of, that's a kind of a short, a short answer.
Well, thank you very much because I want to make sure that the public understands that we are on the jurisdiction of the Bay Area governance. So I'm not bringing Cloverdale to the Bay Area. It has been established since the early 60s. Thank you very much. And for now, we will go on to Alex again, please.
I believe for the next item. Or is that Kevin, are you handling?
Or David and I can, I mean, I can start or David, if you want to add.
Go ahead, Kevin, and David can follow.
Okay. Well, the city did receive an SB two planning grant on the amount of $160,000. You know, David and I thought these two items would go good together in a workshop format because they are land use related and they're housing and so that's kind of where we are. The, the SB two grant, this goal is to facilitate housing growth. We did bring a number of ideas to the council back in November of 2019 of different uses for this fund, for this grant, excuse me. This was the one that was chosen. And I'm not going to go too deep into it, but really the scope of it is, is to look at our downtown zoning and our transit oriented development zoning and try to look for ways to encourage housing. And I know we've had kind of a heated discussion about housing tonight. My, my personal opinion is that, you know, a little bit of housing downtown is a good thing for the businesses. And I hope that that is, is also agreed to by others. Another part of this project is what we call an opportunity sites analysis, where they're looking at two vacant lots downtown and the planning commission helped us out a lot on this part. And kind of discussing what could go there, you know, how to make downtown more vibrant. And they have some, some sketches of buildings and these are lots that traditionally had buildings on them. So there were, you know, through the years, long, I think one of them burnt down. And, you know, someone else may know the history of the lots better than I do, but they did both have buildings on them. So we have Bruce Brubaker and Abe Shepherd and I don't know, and Logan's here too, Logan Woodruff. And they've been working with us. Rafael's part of this too, and he's in here. And the planning, like I said, the planning commission did help us out on, back in April. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to, I guess, Bruce first.
Yes, that's right. Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, council and commission, it's a pleasure to be here. I have a short presentation to make that will hopefully kind of illustrate some of the things you were talking about in the last part of the meeting.
Mr. Brubaker, could you please mention your affiliation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am, I am a principal at Placeworks, which is a planning and urban design firm. And I am joined by my colleagues, Abe Shepherd and Logan Woodruff. And we've been working on this project together to, to look at the zoning ordinances in Cloverdale and in the downtown area and see, see what is working and what might be considered for updating. If it's okay, I'd like to share my screen and give a short presentation. Hopefully you could all see these slides. I will give the presentation, then I'm happy to open it up to questions at the end. And if anybody has questions during the presentation, I can answer them then too.
We will not have questions during the presentation, after the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So the objectives for tonight are basically, I'll briefly mention the background and the objectives of the project. We did, as Kevin mentioned, we did some testing of concepts. So we actually drew some architectural plans on a couple of opportunity sites downtown to test the zoning. And we'll show you those and we will talk about our findings from that and maybe highlight some opportunities for updates. This is our timeline. We have met with the planning commission in April to kind of kick off the project and get input from them. So that was a very helpful meeting. We've done development analysis through April and June. We're coming to you in the study session in July. We will be working on the ordinance amendments, July, August, SEQA documents. And we will be back to you in December to, to, to discuss the project in hearings. The planning area is really restricted. We're not looking at all of Cloverdale. We're only looking at the downtown area and downtown zoning and TOD areas within Cloverdale. The goals of the project are to see if there's a way to attract new downtown development that would be in alignment with city priorities. To see about providing newer, different housing types that might offer a more affordable housing cost. And we're really thinking of affordable, affordable housing in terms of market rate housing. So are there ways for apartments to be built, for example, that might be a cheaper type of housing than a single family detached residence would offer? Some housing downtown would support a more vibrant downtown and strengthen downtown business. That housing would allow people to walk often rather than having to drive every time they take a trip. That housing would also potentially support existing and future transit use. So with those goals in mind, we reviewed all documents that the city has and that kind of have an umbrella over the planning and the, the development in the downtown area, including all of these plans. I'll just highlight, we did look at the general plan. We did carefully review the stationary downtown precise plan. And we did look carefully at the zoning ordinance. The zoning in the area that we're looking at are the ones that are colored. So we looked at downtown commercial zoning, which is mostly along Cloverdale Boulevard, office, multifamily, which is surrounding those lots. And then transit oriented development as well. But after talking to the planning commission and staff, we really did focus in on the downtown commercial area to see what's possible to do downtown. So we identified two opportunity sites to look carefully at. One is, we called Cloverdale Boulevard West. It's directly across Cloverdale Plaza. It did have a, a building on it in the past. It is a site that runs from Cloverdale Boulevard back to an alley access in the rear. The parcel size is about 0.22 acres, so less than a quarter acre. I will give a little aside here that when we were looking for opportunity sites, it was difficult to find sites of any size that would really lend themselves to feasible development. I, I'll go through this more in, in a, in a minute or two, but this, this parcel is pretty typical for the vacant lots that are in the downtown area. So a quarter acre or so. So we're not really talking about giant development. It's just not possible to achieve major or extremely obtrusive big development on these lots. We're really looking at infill and more of a, kind of a surgical investment of development inside the downtown area. This is a site plan that we came up with for this opportunity site. I'll talk about it in more detail, but just in general, the, the, the area along Cloverdale Boulevard that you see in red, it would be retail on the ground floor. And the area behind in gray would be parking spaces with, and there would be housing above this retail and parking. This is a view of the opportunity site from a historic photo and we, we left the, the building colored that was there in the parcel that we're looking at, but it was torn down or maybe it burned down. I don't know. Probably someone knows the history of the site, but currently it's vacant. But it is where that red building is shown. Here's a photo of the existing condition on the site, looking from Cloverdale towards the south. And it shows the empty lot and the spootscape in front of the project. So here is a, an image of what this development could look like using the existing standards that exist in, in the downtown area that are in the zoning code. And I'll go through those in some detail. But I did want to mention that it's a three story building that we're showing here. We have stepped back the top story some distance so that the, the second floor, the, the, the main facade of the building would be in line with other parts, with other buildings neighboring this building. But the top, the three story portion could be set back. That is, that setback is actually not in your, not a requirement in the code. And it's something that we feel like that may be a part of the discussion about including a standard like that in the future or in, in our project, actually. This is an image that shows floor plans. I already mentioned that the red is retail facing Cloverdale Avenue on the ground floor. And then there's parking spaces behind. We were able to fit 15 parking spaces behind. On the second floor, which would be accessed by a stair and an elevator, there would be four units. And on the top floor, the third floor setback from the street would be another three units. So, you know, when, when you lay out sites, especially tight sites like this, it's really a kind of art more than a science. You have to balance the amount of parking you have with the amount of parking required by the residential units, by the retail units, and it all kind of has to add up. And so this project does add up in almost every way. This would be a project that would be allowed to be built under your existing standards with one exception. And that is that the density allowed on the site is 20 units to the acre in the downtown. And that's throughout the downtown area. That's the maximum density allowed. This project with the seven units and the quarter acre, this turns out to be about a 30 unit to the acre project. So we have exceeded the density on, on this site. But otherwise, we provide the parking as required by the units, as required by the retail. And, and we've, I did, I think done a, a project that would fit pretty well in the downtown. But we're, we'd love to have this discussion with you when we get to the discussion part of the presentation. The zoning analysis is, it's a mixed use project. The floor area ratio, which is basically how much floor, how much is of the building square footage compared to the lot square footage. And we are, we have about one and a half times the lot square footage in the building. So we have the, if the lot is 20,000 square feet, we have 60,000 square feet of, of building. So the, the allowable FAR is up to 3.0. We are significantly under that. So the FAR is actually less than what is actually allowed. As I mentioned, the density for our project is 30 dwelling units to the acre, but only 20 dwelling units to the acre is allowed in this, in, in this zone. The height for our project is 35 feet. It's a three story building that is allowed, three stories and 40 feet is allowed in this district. The 15 parking spaces satisfies the downtown zone, but it would require a use permit for the parking because there's a couple of special conditions that need a use permit. And one of those is to reduce the amount of parking required by retail And one of those is to, um, reduce the amount of parking required by retail. Because it's a mixed use project, it has housing and retail. The zoning code allows for the parking to be slightly less in a mixed use building than it is if it's a pure retail building. So, but that requires a use permit. The residential parking ratio is a little over one space per unit in this, which is allowed in the zoning code. Okay. So the second opportunity site we looked at is what we call Cloverdale Boulevard East. That is the site that is right next to Cloverdale Plaza. It has two existing buildings on it, actually three, because we're kind of combining two parcels together. One of the parcels is about a half acre that's right next to the plaza. And then we, we wanted to look at what would, what would be the result if we were able to combine some sites or do what's called assemblage. So we, we took the, the parcel on the corner and added, added that to the, uh, to the other parcel. So the overall parcel is over a half an acre. I should probably step back and say, you know, when we chose these opportunity sites, these are, we're not working with the owner or the developer. These are really only high level tests of, of, uh, existing vacant sites in Cloverdale. So there's a lot of work to do to really get this exact and make it work and get the property owner. You know, they would have to sponsor a project like that. We don't know if they're interested. So there's a lot of steps before anything like this could happen. But as a test, we thought it was revealing to do this exercise. So, um, again, combining two sites here and looking at the results. We came up with a site, with a site plan that does this. Most of the parking behind the building. Again, we have red or retail facing Cloverdale Avenue with a passage through to the parking behind for pedestrians. We also wanted to explore different housing types. So what we see here facing the plaza is a set of townhouses. So these would not have retail on the ground floor, but they might have residential entries on the ground floor facing the plaza. And these townhouses would have parking inside the townhouses accessed from behind. So we're looking at a couple of different, um, uh, development types. Above the retail would be flats, apartments. So, um, here is a picture looking, you can see the Cloverdale Plaza on the left. You can see our site here. We would need to remove these two buildings we're seeing in this picture. And presumably they would, the businesses in them would be relocated. It could possibly be relocated into the building that would be built on the site. This is what the building could look like then. So again, parking behind, ground floor retail, units, flats above, and in this case, we're showing a two story building. Only on the left side, you see, this is where the townhouses could be located in our plan. And I have an enlargement of what the townhouses, again, stepping back the third floor. Entries to the townhouses that could reach out onto the sidewalk. And the parking for those townhouses would be behind. This is a site plan that shows of the half an acre, five point, point five eight acres. It would have about 5,500 square feet of retail. The retail could be subdivided in different ways. It could be fewer spaces that are larger. But there's a lobby to get upstairs to, uh, units along Cloverdale Avenue. So this would give eight units above the retail. And then, as I mentioned, four townhouses, uh, facing onto the plaza and 13, shared parking stalls. So this would be the retail parking would be 13 stalls. And then the residential parking would be 22 stalls. Combined with townhouse and flats would be 22 parking spaces for those units. Okay. So how does this measure up? This, this one does meet, uh, city standards. I think, well, density is a little bit over, but it's a mixed use project that's allowed. The floor area ratio is about 1.1, which is far less than what's allowed. You're allowed to go up to 3.0. So this is much less than, than allowed. The density is very slightly above. It's 21 dwelling units to the acre and it, and it's allowed to be 20 units to the acre. The height is well within the allowable height limit in downtown. The 35 parking spaces would satisfy the existing standards. And, um, for both the retail and the residential parking. So there's a lot of interesting, um, things that we've pulled from this. And I'm sure you have a lot of interesting things in your mind that you want to talk about. I'll just go over some of these, uh, some of the findings that were interesting to us as we went through this and kind of stood back from it and, and looked at it. And, um, we're happy to discuss that further. So first regarding the, the Cloverdale West Street. That's a vacant site. The vacant site makes development much more feasible because you don't have to remove. There's no cost for demolition and there's no existing business that may need to be relocated. So it's a, it's a very developable site, actually. The, we feel that three stories are necessary here to get enough units to make the project work on such a, a small site. The parking would require a use permit. So a developer that wanted to build this project would be faced with that uncertainty because it's no, uh, it's not, um, a sure thing that a use permit will be granted. Access from the rear actually really does also increase feasibility because you don't need to have a driveway from Cloverdale Boulevard to access parking in the rear. So, uh, the access from the, the rear is a good thing. One thing I wanted to mention about the, the, the parking standard, and that is there's one parking standard for retail in downtown. But if it's a restaurant or a bar, and Kevin, you should correct me if I'm wrong, but our read of the code is that there's a higher standard for parking if it's a restaurant or a bar than if it's other types of retail. And so that, this project would not be allowed if, given the amount of parking spaces we have available, if it was to be retail or a bar in either of those two spaces on the ground floor is our retail, uh, read of the code. So those were some findings from this project. Oh, I would also say, let me just say that the, the, I mentioned it before, the step back above the third floor. It seems like that would be an important aspect for consideration in downtown because it's a mostly, mostly one story, but you know, tall, one story and two story development in downtown. And so kind of keeping that character. And this is something that you could make an objective standard that would need to be met by, uh, future development. Okay. On Cloverdale Boulevard East. Some of the findings were this, this project is not likely to be nearly as feasible as the other project. And that is because there's two existing buildings on site. Unless there's, there's, unless the, the owner was really motivated, there's going to be a cost involved in demolition. There's also maybe a cost involved in relocation of the tenants. So it's, it's going to be more difficult to, uh, develop this site than, uh, purely vacant site. We thought that the townhouse type in the right location is a, it would be a benefit for downtown. It would get people, it's a, it's an interesting, uh, housing type. It could be a for sale unit. It would be a, a nice, uh, living, uh, uh, space for the right tenants or the right owners. However, it, you, you may not want to, uh, think about townhouses on Cloverdale Boulevard itself only because it's more of a retail street. So you might think about if townhouse, you know, types were, were allowed or encouraged, that they may want to be rather on side streets, uh, rather than on Cloverdale itself. Parking access, one of the reasons we liked that other little parcel attached to the bigger parcel was that it allowed us to have access to parking from First Street rather than having a driveway on Cloverdale Boulevard. So we would recommend really trying to keep parking access away from Cloverdale Boulevard. Again, our parking ratios assume that there was no restaurant or bar in the, uh, project. And I would recommend revisiting that standard and seeing if maybe there's a way to, to relax that standard for restaurants or even just bring it in line with the other retail standard. And then one thing I didn't mention, but, uh, there is a, a requirement for open space landscaping in parking lots in citywide. And I feel like that may not be as required in a, in a, on a site like this where really parking is tucked behind. It's not really visible from the public. And so having a, a landscape requirement in, in those lots means you're taking away parking and it may impact the feasibility of the project. So. Uh, hopefully I'm not going too fast and covering too much ground, but this is my last slide. Which is questions that came up to us and that you could consider as a council or commission or maybe just, uh, provide us comments later if you don't want to discuss this tonight. But these are, these are questions that, that we want to consider as we move forward. Consider increasing allowable density above 20 dwelling units to the acre on smaller sites. And this is really, if we want to attract development on those sites, it may be difficult to get a feasible development at 20 dwelling units to the acre. Consider administrative approval of downtown parking requirements rather than having a use permit, which is a public review and, and it has a lot of uncertainty involved. Stay in some places, many places, uh, staff, uh, planning director has, uh, capacity to grant, uh, you know, administrative approval. So that's something to consider also. Uh, I've already mentioned considering relaxing the parking standards for retail and restaurants. And then in terms of additional standards that might be considered, I mentioned townhouses. Where those could go, where they shouldn't go. Strengthen the standard that access should not be from Cloverdale Boulevard. Consider standards for stepping back above the second floor. And another standard that I didn't mention that's in the code is that residential balconies shall not face a street frontage. And that's a standard that probably we'll want to review because, um, in the case, for instance, where we have the step back above the second story, that would be a great spot for terraces for the third floor. Let me go to that image. Okay. So this would be a good spot for terraces to be there, but currently that wouldn't be allowed because if you interpret balconies as being like this terrace, then, then that would not be allowed. So that's another standard that could also be considered. So with that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, I think it's a, it's a good, um, I think it's a good exercise for you all to understand what the current vision for development is in your downtown. And we've kind of just demonstrated that by showing two projects that are possible to build under your existing standards. And so hopefully that kind of illuminates your existing vision and maybe shed some light on some of the discussion you had in the last, uh, session as well regarding, you know, what kinds of development do we want in Cloverdale? So with that, I'll, I'll step back and I'm ha- happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Fox, please.
Madam Mayor, if I can, before we open it up for questions for our, for Bruce, our consulting team. If I, if I can, Irene, can, can you go back to project goals on, I think it's slide five? I just want to touch on those briefly, particularly in the context of some of the comments that, uh, Bruce shared with you. Wait till Irene gets it up here. There we go. All right. Just want to, before we fully open it up for, for discussion, I want to talk just a little bit with council and the commission about, about the project goals. I, and some of this was a, a function of your deliberation when you give the authorized staff to proceed with, with, uh, this, this planning effort for our downtown. And as you, as you heard before, on the presentation before this one, you know, we talked a lot about the regional housing needs allocation, meeting our housing needs. Well, well, staff brought forward an option for council. It's one way to do that is really to focus and work at your downtown. And there's a couple of reasons why I just want to highlight why I think it's wise for council to look, look at downtown. In particular, we, we heard comments about the cost of infrastructure. Well, for the most part, infrastructure has been developed and is in place in downtown. So it, it's for the most part readily available to accommodate new development. And that helps alleviate some of the costs and impacts of bringing forward that development. We also talked about, uh, the need to, uh, support a vibrant, uh, economic, you know, vibrant economic development in our downtown, uh, and supporting our business community. One of the reasons why council may want to support additional, uh, housing units within your downtown is because it has the effect of increasing your daytime population. The daytime population is off critical to the, uh, ability of, of a business to support itself. It's this, the folks that maybe who work from home, uh, uh, who are able to, you know, walk in, you know, immediately out their door and be able to, uh, buy the retail goods and services that they're seeking. Or the, uh, you know, the, have access to, uh, services without, without driving a vehicle. A- as Bruce, uh, indicated in his presentation around the issue of density. I've, I've had specific conversations with property owners in downtown who had indicated to me that they, they cannot make a project pencil without an increase in the density. Uh, we worked quite a bit with the, with the property owner at the vacant corner of, uh, what, West Second Street and the Boulevard, who was designing a project that pretty much reflected historically what was there, uh, prior to, uh, the building's demise due to fire. And in order to bring that kind of development back and reflect the historical development that I think we all cherish. It would have been necessary for the property owner, uh, to acquire offsite parking and, and a significant amount, uh, at that. And ultimately it was determined that because of the density restrictions, they, they were unable to make the project pencil. And I just wanted to touch on that because I know there's a lot of concern about the potential impact and development of our communities. And I do want to just highlight that, that there is an important check and that, and that's the market. Right now, the cost for construction, per square foot for construction is probably in upwards of $400 a square foot. And that's just, just for, uh, sticks and bricks. That is include the cost of property acquisition and/or the cost of offsite improvements. And you can, you can do some simple math on that. You know, so a thousand, uh, uh, square feet unit is, uh, uh, you know, 400,000 if that's cost per square foot. Again, not including those other costs. And that's what often developers, uh, and property owners, some of which are long-term property owners in our community, ultimately look at when they prepare their performance. And that's why they seek additional density is to actually make a project work, be able to deliver a project that even reflects historically what's, what was there. Your staff wasn't approaching this from a perspective of, of, uh, looking at high-rise development in downtown. It was, how can we support a planning environment to bring back what was there? And we find, based on what we have in our, on the books today, it's very challenging to do that. Um, and I think what, what, uh, the analysis that the consulting team is bringing forward and the questions that they're raising are pertinent questions for council to consider. If you want to see the kind of development, again, that was, again, historically there. And we think there's support for, to, uh, enable the and we think there's support for, to enable the sustainability of our downtown as both a gathering place and a place for business and a place for our residents to gather and, you know, come together. So that, those were kind of important points I just wanted to offer for council as you, as you, as you look at some of those questions that, that, that Bruce has posed. Parking is, is critical. And while there are, as was pointed out in the previous presentation, there are things that developers can seek to reduce the requirements for parking. But in our, and particularly in our downtown, you may want to look at that issue because it, it's, it's really a constraint for developers to be able to, property owners to be able to bring a project that's viable. You certainly want to look at the density standard and, and specify whether that's something that we can adjust to, again, be able to bring those, those projects forward. Or, and I, and I want to say, we, I say we bring it forward, it, it's, it's really not going to be staff that brings forward a project. It's going to be, it's going to be a, one of your property owners in our, that's a member of our community. It's, it's going to be a developer that is going to present it to us or come to us with concepts that they're going to try to make it work within the existing zoning. And we, we've heard time and time again on these vacant properties that they can't make it work because of the project economics, because of the, the zoning requirements, and in particular, and in particular, the, the parking requirements. So we're, we're just trying to kind of present that to council on. And, and also as part of that, seek solutions to what we've identified is we have these, these arena numbers that we're trying to meet in terms of our housing. So can we, can we meet some of that, some of that need? But also solve and address some other issues by bringing forward that daytime population that's going to help foster a more vibrant economically comfortable downtown. You know, and reduce, likewise reduce the impact on our infrastructure systems. So I, I just want to give council that, that perspective as you, as you, as you tackle some of the questions. Ultimately tonight, we're, we're kind, we'd like to hear your, your feedback on, on those issues so that we can help guide the planning process going forward. And I, I, I think that, that's, that's really where we're at with respect to this presentation tonight and, and, and kind of outlining those, those issues for, for council. Because I think it's, it's reflective of the conversations we've had with some of the property owners in, in our downtown who would, would like to try to bring a project forward that, you know, really does represent our, our community. So with that, Bruce, I'll, I'll turn it back to, I think the slide with the questions. I think it's important that council maybe focus in on, on some of those issues that you, you, you did a great job of outlining for, for councils considering. But Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and it's, it's really up to you and council on how you'd like us to proceed.
I would like to know if Abe has something else to share with council and the planning commission.
I think Bruce covered everything for us, but I'll chime in during the discussion.
Okay.
Thanks for asking.
Of course. And Bob, could you go ahead, please?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Brubaker. The concepts are extremely imaginative. And I have to take you back to 2007, when I was first on the planning commission. At that time, we requested a kind of CAD programs so that we could see what a development might look like within the confines of the neighbors and all of that. This is the first project, not even a project, an idea that's even come before us since then. And it is very nice to be able to see that. I'm intrigued by both concepts. On the second concept, naturally I'm concerned about the existing businesses there. I think it's very important that we take care of those people if, if that were to come to, to a development. But the glaring one that really stood out for me on both concepts was the lack of ADA parking on either side. So, and I know that's going to be a requirement which will reduce the parking on both, well, both sides. So if you could address that, please. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Cox. So you're right about ADA. What, what we typically do when we lay out projects is we use a, a standard parking space that's, that's bigger than normal. And we assume that when you get the compact spaces in, that's going to create enough space to allow that ADA space to be put in. So we find it is a good shorthand for, for our work to just go ahead and use a single larger space everywhere, assuming that, you know, when it gets, when it gets down to it, that the ADA space will be able to fit in the spot. And you're right to call that out. It will absolutely be necessary to provide ADA parking spaces.
Councilmember Bagby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Bruce and team for a really great presentation. It's really in line with a lot of the work that previous councils and planning commissions have done on the downtown. And just to answer your question, that, that big empty lot across the street from the plaza used to be a big brick building and with commercial spaces. And I used to shop there when I first moved to Cloverdale 21 years ago. And it's, it was a unreinforced masonry building that unfortunately was taken down. It was a beautiful old historic building. And I think that, that's why I, I really appreciate the sensitivity and the scale of, of what you've done here. I mean, this is right-sized for Cloverdale. And it brings us back. I mean, it, it's, it's probably going to have to be jiggered and rejiggered. And it depends what the, you know, particular developers are going to want to do. But it's really in line with the scale of our downtown and what we used to be, you know, and one of the, I'm, I'm, I'm really glad your presentation was, was pretty much jargon-free, especially after the first presentation, which was really unnecessarily.
That's true. And I hear that, I have to say, but thank you.
It was pretty, pretty jargon-free. But one of the, one of the terms that you did not use, but I think you're showing is what a lot of planners complain about, which is the missing middle. And it's that really attractive older neighborhood that has mixed use, you know, retail on the bottom, residential on top, parking in the back. And it's just results in a, in a really walkable neighborhood. And it actually results in higher, you know, property values because it's such an attractive place to live and work. And so many people, you know, depending on their stage in life of where they are, they want to be in that downtown. And it tends to trend, you know, younger people and older people. But, but here, here's my question. And it's, I think it probably is most likely to relate to the, the current empty lot on the west side of Cloverdale Boulevard. It seems to me, you know, we're talking about parking requirements downtown and it's a really sensitive subject because, well, I mean, right now we don't regulate parking at all. You know, anybody can go and park. Not completely, but you can, it's, it's not as regulated as it is in some cities that want to have a, a walkable retail-friendly neighborhood, you know, and but the, and it, it might not work because we don't have properties that are necessarily large enough. But the property, that, that property, that's the empty lot where the big brick building used to be. It kind of reminds me of Frog Song Cohousing in Cotati. And I don't know, are you familiar with, with that project?
I know, I know several Cohousing projects, but I don't know that particular one.
Well, the one that kind of sets Frog Song apart then from like maybe Yalupa or some of the others is that because it's on the main drag in downtown Cotati, they actually purposely put retail on the, the frontage and then residential on top and in back. Now, it's a 30-unit complex. So again, it's like, it's far bigger than probably any of the, the properties that we would necessarily have available downtown. But it's just, to me, it seems like an interesting model. And I'm wondering if we did go with a Cohousing group, if we could actually, as, as part of the negotiations and part of the deal, you know, if we, if we got a Cohousing group interested, if we could, they would be more likely to go in for like a car sharing program or something like that. Where they would actually, you know, coming into, you know, living or, you know, buying the units, they would know that there are this many parking places and you are going to have to have a car share program or something like that. So that we're not bleeding over into other neighborhoods. And it just, it might be something that we could negotiate, you know, kind of bake into, you know, a, a residential development. I just wanted to get your, your take and find out if you thought that'd be possible.
Well, I do think that, you know, it's an interesting time in the development world because nobody really knows how, if we're all going to go back to our offices full-time or not. There's a lot of people that are planning, in my world, that are planning to, you know, stay at home at least part-time. So the, one wonders whether families, let's say with two couples can live with a single car now, you know, in a way that you may not have a few, a couple of years ago. It's an interesting question. A lot needs to be sorted out. And Cloverdale is not going to solve the problems of the whole world, you know, in terms of like figuring that out. But I do feel like the, the options are more open now than they have been in terms of innovative approaches to dealing with parking. Because honestly, everywhere we go and all projects we do, when you develop any kind of idea for a site, the first thing you do is lay out the parking and see how many you got. And that tells you how much you can develop. And anything you can do to kind of move that number around means you can do better development, frankly. So if there is a way that didn't impact parking downtown, you know, didn't add to the load in downtown, but, but actually did realistically reduce the amount of cars needed to be parked on the site, that would be a good thing. So Cohousing might be that, you know. And the last thing I, I will say though, is that we're just pulling up ideas here. Your, your property owners, your business community has to take the lead and, and decide what happens, you know. And so we can, we can give some ideas and, and hopefully some of them will be intriguing enough to get people interested in developing some of these vacant parcels that you do have in your downtown. But we can't make it happen.
Oh, thank you. And it's actually, yeah, I'm really interested in that point is that, you know, how, how much of, sorry, it's just a kind of a follow-up question on that. How much, you know, what would be the next steps if we did want to say, you know, we, we want to, we want to work with either property owners or, or potential developers, you know? How, how hard is it to kind of get us to the next step? Because the fact is, is that these properties are sitting there undeveloped. And we're not, you know, it's, it's not helping our tax base. It's a drain, it's a drain on the community. It's a drain on our resources. So, you know, what are some of the, the, the things that we can do to just help, help turn the corner?
Well, I, I would say that the next, the next step is really, we need input from you as to how flexible we can be when we look at these standards to write them, to, to make or to update them in a way that makes development more feasible. And if there is some flexibility there, then we'll write standards that are somewhat more flexible. And we'll come back to you. There'll be a hearing. You'll say, yes, this looks good. You'll adopt the new standards. And then you'll be able to take those standards to your property owners and say, look, we did this work for you. Now it's your job to go ahead and move forward with projects. So.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Assam.
Yeah, Melanie beat me too when I was asking what we can do to move these projects forward. But I, I do love the, the West project. I think it's brilliant use of space, how you're like receiving back that, that terrace. Because I think there's a sensitivity in our community on a three-story building and the community needs, needs to understand that there already are three-story buildings. And so this is a brilliant way of trying to like, screen that away, which I think is great. I also love on the East building, how you set that up. But I, I do have some heartburn about the, the townhouses. I, I think that's going to be a difficult challenge to have people want to purchase a home that spills out onto the plaza. I think it would be, might be more cost-effective and better for revenue for the city to continue to retail down on the lower level and keep housing up, up on top in that kind of downtown area. Where I think the retail will bring in more tax dollars to us. But I don't know if you've done that kind of analysis of what retail space brings into a city versus the, the property tax value of a home. I know that housing, we always want housing. We just talked about the housing crisis and how this could affect our homelessness issues. So we need to add housing. But I, I still think that in this, in this area, I'm really supportive of us bolstering the businesses that are suffering already because they need, they need neighbors. They need people that can work. And I think that the parking issue should be a little bit skirted in ways that we can strategically so that we can have more business and more revenue coming to our city to kind of strengthen that downtown without having to sparse out and grow wide as a city.
That's a very good comment. Thank you. I would say this about retail. We are showing in these two projects, something on the order of 8,000 square feet of retail. It might be eight storefronts. That's a lot of retail. You know, there, we, you, you have a healthy downtown. I am impressed that there aren't so many vacancies like we see in many places we work. But there is a limit to how much retail will be filled. So you have to be careful and, and we can propose it, but you know, it's really going to be a sophisticated developer that figures out, well, is there a demand for that much retail and is that going to work? But I, I, I mean, retail facing the plaza would be great. We were just worried a little bit about the, the quantity of retail that we were showing. So.
Well, you know, we, we do have a shortage of office space in, in Cloverdale. And, and some of it could also be office space. And there are very many organizations interested in that. Okay, Chad, do you have another comment?
Yeah, and one, one other comment I would make is that I, I wouldn't be as concerned about the relocation of those businesses on the East property because I believe all of those business types really fit in with the model of what you were describing as well. They, none of them really had an abnormal business type that wouldn't fit in this, the, the new spaces that could be provided to them. So hopefully those businesses would just have an improvement to their space, but might have some temporary relocation or closures.
And are there any other commissioners that are going to comment tonight? I mean, this is a special opportunity, guys. Come on. We need to make sure that Melanie doesn't speak too much. Okay, Councilmember Powell, please.
You're muted, Joe. There we go.
Thank you. And thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to agree, you know, the downtown has been struggling for a long, long time. And I, I really like the concepts. And I definitely think we need to be more flexible with our standards. So, I mean, what those standards are, they sound very reasonable, the ones that you presented here, at least as a first take for us to look at and consider. But I think we need to make these things happen. So hopefully we could start getting some action downtown. So I, I'm in support of the concept and I just wanted to cheer it up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Eric Sanders, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to make a really fast comment regarding this agenda item. First of all, I want to just reiterate the fact that these concepts, although they, they look great, they're really not, they haven't been created or developed with the property owners in any way. Although, I really hope that some of the property owners around the downtown area take a good look at what the possibilities are and encourages them to develop some of these projects, or maybe just give them the idea of what else is out there. In additional, or in addition, excuse me, I hope that the public in general, the residents of the city of Cloverdale, take a look at some of these to see what kind of possibilities exist out there. And realize that these are some ideas that could really help our town prosper, grow, and make it look really nice downtown and maintain this small-town charm that we have. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Very briefly, Melanie, because we have public comments still. And Councilmember Walter.
I was just going to reiterate what you were saying about, one of the things that, the feedback that I get from folks is that shortage of, of office space. And, you know, this really, I, I think that these concepts are really consistent with our, our downtown original charm. It really preserves our culture and our smart, our small business culture and our entrepreneurial.
and our entrepreneurial culture, because it, it, it kind of incorporates that form-based code concept where you can have, you know, it's just, you got retail here, you've got housing here, but you're not dictating, you know, what that looks like. You're, it's adaptable, it's changeable. Um, and so I, I, I think that it's, it's very adaptable for us. And, and I completely agree with, with Eric. I think it's just got to be up to, um, you know, the landowners downtown. But I think we, we heard from, from David, we've already had somebody who is interested, was interested in developing that. Um, like, it's that, it's that northwest corner of Second Street, and it just didn't pencil out. And so this is the feedback that we needed to have. Um, to say, how do we turn the corner on this? And it's, it's, it's adapting to, ironically, kind of going back to the kind of, uh, properties that, that we had downtown. So, yeah, I'm just, um, very happy, very happy to see this and, and hope that we can, you know, adapt to this.
Thank you. Councilmember Walter.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you, you know, just more or less an observation. You, you know, I have to agree, we need to be more flexible with our downtown standards. Um, you know, I go back to 2004 when we, uh, took a rumbling four-lane highway and we converted it into what we have today, uh, which is a beautiful downtown pedestrian-friendly. And it sat pretty much dormant, uh, after that, until the Silverwood Building. Barry took that old, um, um, section down there where the Peking Palace was. He renovated that, and it's a beautiful, uh, facility now. And we need more of that in our downtown. And just from a history standpoint, and Melanie, I thought you were aware of this, but there was a point in time when we, uh, discouraged, uh, office space from being, uh, on the boulevard. We wanted them in the back alleys or up on the second floor, because we wanted that space retailed, uh, available for retail to improve our tax base.
Oh, I agree. I agree, Gus. Absolutely. Sorry, I wasn't clear.
Yeah, no. But, uh, so, yeah, whatever we can do as a council, as a planning commission body to encourage more, uh, entrepreneurship in our downtown, I'm all for it. Uh, I know Al King, uh, who took down the brick building, the Velastic building, because it was red-tagged at one point, uh, came to the city with some plans, uh, three-story facility, and we just couldn't make it work. He need, he, he was, he was just a little short in space. So, uh, whatever we have to do to get the downtown sparked up again, uh, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lance?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Bruce, next time I would recommend that you insist you go first. To make it a little easier on you. You seemed a little hesitant for your, uh, for your presentation and, and I apologize for that. I, I, I actually loved the presentation that I call the Velastic Lot. It's the one on the west side. I think that, that was beautiful building. I, I loved how it was set up. The one on the corner of First Street, I'm a little hesitant, you know, like others have stated, the townhomes facing the plaza. The other part is it's starting to, to make it into a little more of a high-rise in that area, which it takes the charm away. The one thing I will tell you that I, I'm a little bit hesitant on is the, uh, units per acre on the Velastic Lot. Because if we do that, I'd be nervous that we'd be setting precedent for later, for somebody that wants to come in and go even more, push the limits again. So a- a- as much as I love the design, I think that if we could take one of the units out, make something a little bit nicer in there, it might be, uh, easier to sell. But thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners or council members to comment? Okay, we'll take it to public comment. Any, any hands? Okay, go ahead. Um, Irene, please.
Yes, let me guess. Uh, we'll start with Angela.
Um, Marta, I forgot to mention earlier that you represent the Hispanic community. Is there any way that you can look into getting in, uh, one interpreter at least for the city council meetings? Maybe if the Hispanic community pre-registers, if they're going to attend, then maybe there can be a interpreter for them. Um, and then as far as the presentation that you guys just had for downtown, I don't understand why you would want to take out the laundromat and the small business and the parking that's for those customers and the post office and the outpost. The, the, those buildings aren't vacant. I don't understand why you would take that laundromat out when so many people in this community depend on it. Is the city soliciting all of these, uh, property owners? Are they willing to sacrifice all the locals and the low-income businesses that are struggling to, to put in housing? That's shameful. Um, you guys want to spruce up the downtown and make it all fabulous and great? Well, why don't you maintain the homeless there that are using it as their hangout and their toilet every day? Um, you know, earlier, Melanie, you blew up and, and have this whole immature reaction regarding Bay Area comments and then tried to put Kevin on the spotlight, which was totally rude and condescending. You don't understand and listen to your constituents. You hear what you want to hear. The comments of Bay Area is that you have a Bay Area lifestyle attitude to destroy Cloverdale and the quality of life. It's your thinking of moving Cloverdale so fast. You did not even listen to any of your constituents. Just another selfish move by you. Council, city manager, attorneys, do any of you plan on addressing any of the concerns of a small city um, with all of the, this housing? Um, like Joe Paula said earlier, we should not be lumped in with larger cities. Uh, perhaps you can collaborate with other small cities in California that are going to be impacted by all of this and get some of the regulations changed for the smaller populated cities. Um, do any of you plan on addressing that or reaching out to other city councils in small cities? I'd like to know if, if that's going to ever happen, or if you're just going to all run with this and try to, uh, pretty much, you know, like Eric said, take away our small-town charm. Uh, we got businesses that are, that are trying to thrive and they're still around. Think about them. Think about your constituents. It's very simple. That's all you have to do. I know, Melanie, you can't do that, but the rest of you, think about your constituents. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just a second. I, I need to, um, comment. Um, the League of California Cities, which is the entity that really leads um, a lot of the policy and support for all cities in California, has what is called Rural Cities, uh, program that was started by Melanie Bagby. So that when we have this blanket, uh, legislation, we together have a voice, as small cities that are, that are not the rich small cities of the South Bay. So this is something that, uh, the public needs to know. The League of California Cities is a very relevant organization in the state government or municipal, or municipal jurisdictions. And we have in-house a woman who has really had the vision to lead the, uh, Redwood Empire Division into being considered and speaking for all smaller cities in the county of Sonoma and throughout the state on issues as such. So I advise that everybody gets familiar with this, uh, initiatives that we do have. And this is why it's important that we are in state and regional organizations. So, thank you very much. And we'll go to the next person, Garrett. Thank you.
Thank you, Council and Planning Commission. Um, if you guys could show the one slide on the goals of objectives, I'd like to make a little bit of a point that I think is a bit of a, uh, misconception that we don't have a lot of walking distance in, uh, homes since there wouldn't be walking distance from the downtown area. We have a ton. It just depends on how far you want to walk. There's a lot of neighborhoods that are within walking distance of Friday Night Live that I go there every time. And we ride our bikes. That's another invention. It is almost as good as walking. And we say, wow, if only we lived at all these houses, we could go to Friday Night Live within 10 minutes or less of walking. That's one. Another thing I wanted to say is that some of these, I just want to be careful here, because some of these plans look a little bit like Trojan horses. And I'll tell you what I mean by that. If, when I looked at it, they were zoned all, um, real estate commercial. And in both of the presentations on the, or at least both parcels, there was way more square footage of residential than there was retail on both of these. And so it seemed like a little bit of a Trojan horse. And there's kind of a Trojan horse built within a Trojan horse, because my understanding from the, well, first of all, none of those look like low-income housing. And so the Trojan horse within a Trojan horse that I'm concerned about is that once the door is opened for, uh, residential plan in the building approval, in the building, uh, approval phase, then, uh, they could quickly become whatever they want. And we'll kind of lose, um, the, the city will lose control of these really nice plans. Have, because, well, let's face it, we all just saw the last presentation. And thirdly, I just would say that somebody on the count, on, on the Planning Commission had mentioned, and I echo it, a little bit of a concern that if you're going to put something, uh, across from the plaza, you know, the, the soundstage and stuff, I think it would be better if we're parking in a retail and not squeeze residential right up in front of the plaza and just cut off our, uh, it really seems like it cuts off the plaza and turns the plaza into a kind of confined space. Thank you, Planning Commission and Council.
Thank you very much. We have Renee.
Yes, um, thank you for the very interesting presentation. Um, I happen to live downtown. Garrett actually took a bunch of my speaking points, which was great. But, um, from my perspective, um, I'm one of those people that does work from home and I moved to Cloverdale pre-COVID and have been working home since. When I walk downtown during the daytime, there really is not very many people, um, shopping or going to restaurants. And that would be, you know, as long as I've lived in Cloverdale. And so what I find concerning is to put people in that downtown corridor, that then they're all going to leave, uh, town for their jobs that are out of town. Um, and that's, that's pretty much what we see already today. And so it seems like more of the same. Um, and then the other point I have would be just, it seems we're missing an important component, which is our businesses. Um, I'd like to see the Chamber of Commerce, they may be on the call, but I can't see the participants. But Chamber of Commerce and other, um, you know, business owners, um, from what I'm seeing is they potentially, say like Mo's Eagle Nest might get another couple sandwiches on the weekend, or Air Mavis might get some people shopping on the weekend. But they also are going to have more people parking and where their regular customers park. Um, I, I'd like to get their feedback if they think that we can actually bring in additional, um, you know, retail restaurants and that kind of thing. So it seems like we have a hard time today. So how would we fill those spaces? Thank you.
Any other hands of people who have not participated?
Yes, we have a hand up from Sue.
Thank you.
Hi, oh, clock. Want to start? Thank you, Irene. Um, thank you all, um, for the presentation and for your comments and questions. Um, I, I know that it keeps being brought up that parking is a, a very sensitive topic and then it sort of seems to end there. Um, I, I feel like I'm hearing this ideal, which is the 1.5 or, um, there's a formula to how many cars people think, uh, are related to, to the unit size. And I can tell you, whether that's living in San Francisco or living in Cloverdale, that the average unit for one person has two to three cars, depending on how many people are living there. And if a unit has two or more bedrooms, there can be up to four cars. And that is not a, an imaginary number. You can drive through any of these neighborhoods and they're packed full of cars, because people are having to live more people per units than they expect. And I think that that needs to be really established, not a hypothetical, but really researched what is happening in our community. Because if you have overflow from these parking garages onto the street, people actually won't go downtown for a coffee or to park to eat, because it'll just be too difficult. It'd be like downtown Hillsburg. And this is not an imagination. These are real numbers. Look at any of our developments. It's already happening. So I think that there needs to be an exploration to underground parking, some other forms of parking. But to assume that people are going to stop using cars or take the bus, it, it's really not a viable option. I also want to thank Bob Cox profoundly for bringing up the accessible parking issue. Um, as a disabled person, there is already, again, not enough disabled parking and specifically ramp van parking in Cloverdale. It is a huge issue for the disabled community here, um, and that absolutely has to be considered. Uh, especially there is zoning regulations for how many of these units have to be accessible. So I think that that really needs to be explored as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And we have, um, Trudy.
Hi, um, yes, I love these ideas. Um, my concern has been raised in that what is the current demand for retail space? Uh, when I go downtown, I see a lot of vacancies. And it would be terrible to build these new beautiful buildings just to have more vacant signs, um, downtown. And that, that's it. Thank you.
Any other hands in the public? Irene?
No other hands, Mayor.
Okay. And please, uh, remember, this is an exercise to explore how can we improve the business community in Cloverdale? And how can we also provide a different type of the traditional housing uh, for people in Cloverdale? Again, this is an exercise. It's not a proposal that is going to be, uh, voted on tomorrow. There are very many things that need to be taken into account. And there's no way that any development can happen without complying with ADA. So it might not be in the presentation, but it's a given that it's going to have ADA accessibility. Okay, um, at this point, I bring it back to Council and to the Commission. Do you have any other comments, any suggestions? I mean, this kind of meetings are so that you could voice your ideas, so that you could explore um, further into what you're used to seeing. And at the same time, to affirm what is your position in terms of what it is that you want your community to be and what it's going to look like. Uh, we definitely need to increase our tax base. And yes, we talk about money, because if we don't have money, we don't have programs. We cannot have repairs. We cannot have capital improvements. So, uh, it is very important that this is something that is going to benefit the community. It is not something that is just, um, an intellectual exercise to, to aggravate, aggravate anyone. So let's keep the vision, let's keep the objectives into our heads, and let's work together towards, uh, improving our town. So at this point, uh, I would like to pass it on to, um, David and Kevin for any closing comments. And, um,
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that, um, if there's consensus, I, I would, uh, ask Placeworks to explore all, all the different possible amendments. And, you know, we're not committing to them at that point. We can bring them back. We can bring in a planning commission. We can, you know, sift through them, see if they make sense. Um, but we have them. We've got this grant paying for it. So, um, it would seem to make sense that they could come up with all their ideas and we can see which ones, you know, makes sense for us.
Definitely. And, you know, until there is a design, we don't know what things are going to look like. This is just an idea. And, and, you know, it could be rehashed many times. You could see this model, that model, something that is more towards what, uh, the Commission would like to see and what the citizens would like to see. Um, Commissioner Holberts, please.
One of the questions I have for Placeworks, and I, I thought they did an excellent job. I like seeing everything visually like that. But my question to, to them is, this is a model. Do you have a place that you did a model and now it's actually in place? That we could actually see, something that we could follow through, it's like, okay, well, this city did it this way. And, uh, we could visually see that. And then And, uh, we could visually see that. And then also speak to them to see what challenges they experienced.
That's a good question. We can, uh, we can pull something together and provide it to, back to the city. In terms of places we've worked that ended up, uh, implementing, uh, something, uh, I think, um, I think it would be best to, uh, to provide that through Kevin. And maybe he could distribute to the council and commission.
And, and Bruce, I, I wanna just add that you know, the, the, the development concepts that were prepared by Placeworks weren't intended to provide a prescriptive use for those properties that were identified. The intent was to give examples of development, what it would, what it might look like and how you, you might provide for a project that, that's feasible in order to help inform the council and the commission about what are some reasonable updates that we might wanna consider to our zoning ordinance that would enable these developments to be, be feasible. So I, I, I think the comments about, uh, residential facing the plaza, very good comments. I'm not, I don't think, uh, uh, Placeworks was suggesting that that, that that's what we have to do to make it work. Was just, was more of a concept if, if, if we, if a development came forward that, that was designed accordingly, what kind of changes and updates would we need to make to enable that development to be feasible? And I think that's the, that's really the guidance we're seeking from council tonight, whether there's, you know, for instance, uh, a willingness, um, on the, the, the West project where the third story was stepped back. Is, is there support for that concept? And, and if there is, we can provide direction to the team, the consulting team to build that into the, the guidelines and the zoning ordinance. Um, is there support, for example, to, uh, and I heard kind of mixed results to allow an increase in the density in the downtown commercial zoning district to again, uh, enable projects to, uh, to pencil economically? Cause I think that's, that's a real important consideration. The, the other aspect was, you know, is there some consideration around the parking standards? And I, I can tell you, I've, I've had discussions with multiple property owners about how difficult it is. Cause right now, the standard for the most part is three parking spaces per unit. And, um, you know, that may be because that's what we see in our community. But in order to, uh, let's say, provide five units, that's, that's 15 parking spaces in our downtown which eats up critical valuable space that could otherwise be dedicated to, uh, revenue generating development. And, and I think that's where again, that tie-in to, to economics is, is uh, any, any development, not parking, um, is going to, uh, generate, is, is gonna increase assessed valuation, which generates property taxes for, for the city. And then where we start looking at the retail space, that also supports and generates, uh, sales tax revenue. So those are kind of some of the things, I mean, we heard from council on, on some of that. And I guess that's what we're, we wanna uh, take that input and, and, you know, update the zoning ordinance to be, uh, you know, provide for some more flexibility to, to support a development project should it come forth at the willingness of, of a property owner and developer. Uh, and again, we are nobody, by no means suggesting that we, we, uh, remove existing businesses. Of course, that would be a complete negotiation with the property owners to, to work with any existing businesses, uh, to facilitate, you know, future development. So we're, we're, we're by no means suggesting that, uh, uh, we, we, we don't want our existing businesses to, to, um, you know, continue to be able to operate and be successful in their, and, and you know, what they're doing. It's just what might work as a concept that we can then build into our zoning ordinance. So that, that's, I think, what our, our key goal tonight was, is to get your feedback on that, on those, kind of those key issues. Uh, I think council said the height, it felt comfortable with the height, um, uh, restrictions, which is 40 feet of three-story. Look at stepping it back, the floor area ratio, which we touched on, uh, lightly, what it's three. And so what that means, just, just for council and commissions reference, that means 100% lot coverage for three stories. And all the scenarios that were presented by Bruce are less than that. So, uh, you know, it's an area where, you know, we might even be able to reduce the FAR and still accommodate some of these projects. But, uh, again, I, I, I think uh, the key area is, is around, uh, uh, parking and density, particularly as it rates, relates to downtown commercial. Um, one other area that we didn't-
You go on, uh, David. Uh, I, uh, to reiterate on what you said about the proposal and the business protection, uh, I am very grateful to Bruce for saying that the businesses that are there right now would be totally appropriate to be in this plan. Because they are the kind of businesses that you want downtown. So by no means does it mean to eliminate the barber shop or the laundromat or anything as such. To the contrary, it would, it would bring an opportunity for a greater space uh, to accommodate more business and small businesses, which is actually the heart of small towns. Uh, thank you for that, uh, Bruce. Continue, David, please.
Yeah, that really wraps up my, my, uh, my comments to council and, and commission. You know, again, we, we really just wanted to get your feedback so that we can bring something back that reflects, you know, your, 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 uh, you know, is a consensus of, of council and commission and is ultimately supportable by, by the community.
And I see that Commissioner Waggy has his hand up, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Cruz. Taking a look at that proposal, which I think is very interesting from an architectural and kind of, uh, land use planning. But I think something that could be added to it that would really help would be some kind of economic modeling to figure out what kind of additional, say, tax revenue, property values, you know, what is this gonna do financially for the city? If this kind of a project or those kinds of projects or, or similar projects were ever, um, built. We, several times during the course of the evening, tax revenue or tax base has been mentioned, but I haven't really seen any kind of quantifiables about that. And I think that's a pretty important topic. But anyway, that's just my, my comment.
And in addition to, um, Commissioner Waggy's, um, comment, I would like to know if it's possible for you to share. Uh, I don't know if now or in another presentation because it's coming to 11 o'clock. And, um, what are the properties and areas did you consider? I mean, this was presented previously. I did see that in one of the planning commission meetings and so on. But, uh, it would be nice to include that in the, in the next presentation you make to the public. So people can see that, uh, there were other areas that have potential and, and perhaps indicate why they were not chosen in terms of the objectives that, um, we want to achieve in terms of tax base, housing, multi-use and encouraging small businesses. Is that an appropriate request, Bruce?
Yes, we can, uh, we can certainly include, uh, all of our opportunity sites that we analyzed uh, and show them to the community and to the commission and council. Uh, we'd be happy to do that.
Commissioner Waggy, did you have another comment?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay, well, just make, I wanna make sure that you have, thank you. Okay, so anybody else have any comments, any suggestions? If not, um, perhaps we need to go ahead and take into account, what kind of direction do we want to give tonight? Is it one to, um, provide greater direction? Have you have, uh, have you had enough comments to, to kind of tweak this a little bit, Bruce?
Oh, I, I think we do have great comments from the council and commission and the public. And I think we could take all of those under consideration, work with staff to, um, maybe have some proposed or some potential zoning changes and then return to council and commission, uh, with, with some, uh, proposals for that. If that makes sense to you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, and I also would like, uh, more historical reference to what has been in these spaces in the past. So people don't feel that, uh, it's gonna be a, a total misconstrue of what the downtown was or should be or will be, et cetera. And, and it's very good that, you know, that, uh, empty lot on the west side was, um, was alive for some of the people here in this meeting. So that you have a reference point. So, um, I think we gave our verbal report. Oh, oh, okay, so uh, is, is that it for that, David and Kevin and Bruce? There's enough direction.
I, I think we've received enough feedback and input from, from council, Madam Mayor, unless there's any final comments. And um, this was really the, the concluding item on the special workshop tonight. Uh, I just want to thank obviously council, of course, and, and the commission for, uh, coming together in this joint workshop. I think it was a valuable exercise to have a, a, a conversation, discussion uh, on this type of project, uh, you know, with, it's part of a joint meeting. And, uh, I think it, you know, it, it facilitated, uh, a lot of important conversation that was critical to future development of, of our community and our downtown. Uh, so I, I hope, uh, it was valuable for, 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 for the council as well as our commission to be able to come together. And, and my hope is we can, we, we can do this more often. I think we should, uh, to facilitate conversation around, uh, future development of our, of our city.
Well, thank you very much. And, uh, I think we have all given our reports so far and it's time for us to adjourn. So thank you again, and I look forward to continuous work and collaboration. Everybody have a good night.